It is February 23rd and this is the Placerville City Council meeting. And I'd like to bring it to order. Our first order on the agenda is that we will be adjourning to closed session. And prior to adjourning to closed session, I would like to open it up for any public comment regarding the items on closed session.
And Mayor, I see no, no attendees separate from us, so I'm assuming no public comment.
All right, I'll go ahead and close.
Mr. Mayor, before, before you close it, just with regard to the anticipated litigation item, I'd like to just state that the basis for that is a notice of commencement of action against the city of Placerville, which we received on February 16th of this year from the Sulari Law Firm.
All right, well, thank you. Should I open that back? Oh, there's nobody on?
Nobody on, no.
All right, so in that case, we will go ahead and close the closed session. We'll go, we'll close and go to closed session. And we'll be back at approximately six o'clock. See you all then. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're here. All right, we'll go ahead and bring this meeting back to order. This is our city council meeting for September 23rd, 2021, six o'clock. And welcome, everybody. And if you would all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic or which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Connell, can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember No.
Here.
Councilmember Saragossa.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to through the agenda, there are no ceremonial matters for this evening. And we are with attorney, attorney John Driscoll for any report of closed session, closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight in closed session, the council did not take any report, reportable action with regard to any of the three items on the agenda.
Thank you very much, John. All right, moving on, can we get a, an adoption, a motion for the adoption of the agenda or any changes?
Move for adoption.
All right.
Second.
All right, we got a roll call, please. Let's see, who did the second? That was Michael, I guess. We'll give him the win on that one.
Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Saragossa.
All right, moving on for announcements and presentations to the public, brief comments by city council. I'll start off with a council member, Borelli.
I'm kind of the same thing as I offered last time. I've done a few Zoom meetings. I, it was one really, I thought, you know, was a great one, was the leak, our quarterly meeting. And I've been in touch with the fire safe council and you know, like I say, a lot of Zoom meetings.
Yeah, thank you. Vice Mayor Taylor.
I attended an Eldorado Union High School District Safety Meeting, which was very eye opening. It's just really unbelievable, all the things that the high schools have to take into consideration for student safety and the sheriff's department was there and Placerville PD was there and Eldorado Fire Department. And they're just, they really work hard together to make sure that the student body stays safe. So that was really interesting to be a part of, and I appreciated the opportunity to be there. And I just want to take this opportunity to give a quick update on the logo meeting committee. We've been getting lots of questions about it, so we have been meeting pretty much weekly to work on it. I know that it has been taking longer than expected. That's not due to a lack of effort or will on our part. And we hope to bring recommendations back at the next meeting for your consideration and public feedback.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember No.
I've just been attending all my trainings, did the AB 1234 training. I have harassment training this Thursday. Finished all the council training classes and all my onboarding meetings for all the committees. So just been getting fire hosed with information.
Well, thank you for doing that. I know that the onboarding process can be challenging at times, so thank you. And council member Saragossa.
Thank you. It's kind of the same. I've had, I'm going to be doing my onboarding for Pioneer here next week. And then I just want to give a shout out to Caltrans. I know they were out today along Highway 50 doing brush clearing all along on the east side. And so I'm not sure how much more they were doing throughout the day. I had just passed by mid afternoon after a meeting. And they were doing quite a bit of work off the freeway there. So any vegetation that's removed is a good thing for us along that corridor there. So kudos to District 3 and Caltrans for, for getting that worked in. And that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And actually, I have no comments for this, this council, this council meeting. So we'll go ahead and move on to city website review with our esteemed city manager, Cleve Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before I get into this, I want to, I want to thank a couple of people. I want to thank Erin Strawn, my secretary. She was very busy today getting some bugs worked out. We actually went live with our work, with our website today about one o'clock. Quickly discovered some, some problems with it that we had to correct, but we got the majority of those corrected. There's a few minor things and those continue as you go on that we have to look at. So I am going to share my screen here with you in a minute. And I will walk you through some things and then I'm actually going to turn the time over to Rebecca Neves and let her share her screen. I want to thank her too. She was very instrumental in one part of this, the 311 program that we are implementing with the new website, which I think is really valuable and we're really excited about it. And I'll, I'll talk about a little bit more about that and then Rebecca kind of introduce you to that. So with that, I will bring up the website. This is, let me, let me get back to the start of this. This is what you'll see when you first come on the website now. There are videos and we can change these. We have three or four videos here of just, some of them are like this, they're drone videos. Some are ground shots and et cetera. But I think it's a good luck introduces you to, to our city. We do still have the video tour that is on our website. You can see one of the buttons down here in the middle of the screen. That is the video tour that we get done through CGI company called CGI. That's a free service. I say free, however, they do go out for businesses and solicit our businesses to advertise on, on those videos. So, and I will note on that point to Mayor Thomas, normally the mayor is on those. I think if you pull it up right now, I believe it's still John Corici when he was mayor at the time that they were updated. They will be updated this year. In fact, I have a meeting with them next, next, actually tomorrow, I think it is, to talk about that, the next update and changes we want to have made and et cetera. So I'll be working with the mayor on that. So just so you know, many of the things that you've been used to on our old website are still there. And so if you are to look at, for example, these things on the top, those have not changed. Most of that, there's been some minor changes, but most of that is going to be the same of what you've seen in the past. Now, there are some things we've changed and corrected internally, but we think it is good. The one, the one thing that has changed on there, and this is something I've been trying to do for some time. Want to mention the video right here. If you notice, that was our former IT person, Jordan Spriggs, that was in the band there. And while I'm on there talking about the video too, I want to give credit to Paul Cockrell from Placerville Art Gallery. We are looking at ways to be able to credit him actually on the screen and we will do that. And Paul provided these videos for us. I want to know him. If you get a chance to see Paul, please thank him. He provided those to us. So the other thing that is new that we've changed is the, the how do I function? And we've, we've tried to make this complete to where almost anything you want to do now, you can go to this, how do I function? If you want to, we don't have it completely set up. As you know, our pay online billing process, but we will soon. But you can go down to, you see here, it says pay. So if you want to pay for a building permit, this only takes us currently to our building permit process and tells you what has to happen. But there, there's other things here. You can go to the parking permit. I'll give you that as an example. Tells you how, you know, how things work for that. So there's various things that we will improve over time with that. But really, this should almost give you this one button that you can click to things and you can hopefully find anything that you want to on our web, website under this, how do I function? So we're excited about that and how that will work. The other thing that I will go to, you see these buttons along the bottom of here. These are all live and will take you to different things. You can see contact us. That will bring up a contact page where you can contact us for various information that you, that the city citizens may want to ask us about. So that is available now and they can, they can do that. Other things, update on COVID-19, meetings and agenda. You click on this, it'll take you all city meetings. And you can click to the meetings or you can click to the agenda. Employment opportunities, a quick click on there takes you to any job openings that we have. And if you click further on these job openings, it'll take you into the application process where you can file an application online. So that is up and running. Active projects, that's just a list of our current active projects. And you can see on that one, there's, it will also show you the projects that are out to bid on there also. I mentioned the video tour, that is up and still running. I'm going to go down here before I move on. Of course, we have our council members and a calendar. This calendar, we need to do a little bit of work on. Right now, it's only showing city council meetings. If you go to the main calendar through, through the how do I process or other processes, it will list all of the meetings, all of our committees, commission, city council meetings. This one will be updated. We're working on, it was supposed to be, and we don't know why it doesn't list them all, but we will have that updated to where we'll list them all. These are just various things that are going on currently in Placerville. Unfortunately, if you click on the activity guide over here, you're going to get a message that says we don't currently have an activity guide due to COVID. We have not been running activities and therefore did not see the point in doing an activity guide. But we will bring that back and when it is available, it, it will be there to come up. Looking down here, you can see city council meetings and planning commission meetings, all of those that are coming up. And then just some general information down on the, on the bottom. And events, not a lot going on right now again because of what's going on with COVID, but we will have community events listed here. With that, I'm going to talk about the very last button over here, which is report a concern. This is the new 311 program that is available on our, on our website now. It is also available on our, on your, your phone. And if any of you pulled our website up on your phone before, it was a little bit cumbersome. There were some things that did not work well. With the new website, it's much easier. The first thing you will see is all of these buttons. So you can easily get to those. If you need to get to the, any of these services up above, there's the three bars that you can click on your phone and bring those up to, so that you can get to those also. For the last about two years now, we have been working on and getting quotes and looking at ways to establish a work order program for virtually many of our departments, primarily public works and parks. But, but all of our departments have some uses that they can use this for. The fortunate thing with our new website is this report of concern now provides that for us. And so with this, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca Neves, who assisted with setting this up for us. And she's going to walk us through how that new program will work. I guess before I do that, do you have any questions or comments from the council that you want to, just general about what you're seeing right now? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing and Rebecca, I'll turn it over to you and you can go through that, that process.
Good evening, everybody. How, hope you're all doing well and thanks for letting us have a moment of, you know, being able to download some nerd fun on you today with the reporting system. So I wanted to pull up the website here. I'm going to share my screen. So we, as Cleve mentioned, we have our new website and I'm going to click on the report of concern, which is our 311 system where folks can come in and either go through the website forum on their PC or, and actually, if you can see, it comes up in a nice little easy window in your smartphone, which is a lot more user friendly. And you may have seen similar systems for like City of Folsom with, where they have see click fix and things like that too. So it's just a nice, easy way for folks to, you know, let us know of an issue in town. So on report a concern, the first thing you're going to need to do actually is so you'll click on make a request. And I happen to be logged in or will be logged in already. But for anybody who does not have an account, which is most everybody, you would need to create an account. And your name and your address is not required, but it will require an email and a password. So that would be, you know, essential information for that account. And so I'm actually just going to click in and go into the program. So here is where you can select a service. And so I'm just going to do an example for folks and just to kind of see what happens on the system, both on the website, but then also on the backend of it when we receive these requests. So they kind of have a little bit of an understanding what goes on in, in addressing them. So let's pick an easy one. We pick road maintenance and marking requests. And one that we hear about often is potholes. And so we can click pothole defects. So there's a couple of things here now, as you're creating the request, you'll be able to identify the location in three different ways. Number one is you can click find me right there on the map and then you say allow. And because I'm at City Hall, it actually goes right to City Hall location or Commercial Medical Center, apparently. So that actually we need to be over here. So that's where you, so actually I just showed you the second way you could do it. Is you actually can go find the location, then click on it and then the little icon tick will go to that location. The other way is actually to put in the physical address here. So there's three ways. So you can click find me. Although that didn't work at this moment, but you, or you can actually move the map and click with the blue dot where your location is. Or you can put in your street address. Then two other pieces of required information will be the description of the location and the description of the issue. So I'm actually going to do a test run here. So what I'll put in here is I will, I have my little tick mark up here in description of location. So I will say test and then I'll say pothole example. And then description of the issue, I will say public works is awesome. And then I will add a photo or file. And because you know, if you're on your smartphone, you can actually, you can actually, you know, take a photo of the issue and upload it right there too, which is nice. So as it uploads it, you know, and I'm acting as a member of the public right now logged in. So then, you know, yeah, I would like to receive email updates. My request is updated. And they can actually, when they set up their account and they set up, they can put in a cell phone number. So they can even receive text message updates to their requests too. So then we'll go here and we'll say review 311 request. And I have all my information in and I clicked that I'm not a robot just for fun. And say it looks good. Send my request. So then what will happen is you will see you have a ticket number that's generated 1008. Because this is actually the eighth ticket we've generated. So then you go, if you've submitted multiple requests before and you kind of want to know where they're at beforehand, you can actually click on view my other requests since member of the public would be logged into the website. The request that they submitted would be tagged to that email. And then you could actually see some requests that have been placed earlier. So you can kind of see some of our test ones that we've done before, you know, testing one, two, three, another go run at it in terms of making sure the system is working. And then you can actually even go to the 311 map. And it will show you little tick marks of where the requests are located. So as you zoom in, I did some test ones over near Town Hall and I did another one. You know, just a random building location here and there. And so then I went, so that's how you can kind of watch and see how your requests are coming along. And on the backend of it, I'm going to switch to the backend of it. So we go here, this is our dashboard. And I'm actually going to refresh this page and you'll see right there at the top, 1008. So this is what staff would be seeing on the backend of those service requests. So there's our little request right there because it is a public works item. It's assigned to our public works director, Nick Stone. And then he would click on there. And at that point, he could assign it to his superintendent or he can, he can, you know, add a little note extra to staff or anything like that. And so then he can also update the status too. So if it's been assigned resolved, if we need to provide direct feedback or close it out, we're actually just outright reject the ticket too. If we say no, we, you know, that's, and oftentimes, you know, that may become the case, but we will always have a record of it in our queue on the backend of it. So, so this one will say, okay, we resolved it. We fixed the pothole and our little cone friends there helped us out. And then from there, we update the ticket. And then we can go, then the person who's from the public would then click on here and they could go to view my requests. And you'll see once the 1008 is now resolved. So what that actually also looks like, please forgive me, I'm trying to pull up my email also. So when you receive, you know, you'll have this. So when you submit your ticket, you will receive an email like this that says, you know, hey, yeah, we received your ticket. Thank you for submitting your request and we'll let you know as you get updated. And then because I actually happen to be a notification person, then you'll actually then, so this is what public works would see when they get the ticket is a notification, hey, there's a service type, it's potholes. You can click on the admin location and find out exactly where it is to go address it. And it basically becomes the work order generation log in email. And then once it's resolved, it will actually, this is the member of the public would see an email like this. This says, this ticket for this request has been marked resolved. Do you need to review this request at the citizen portal? So there's a lot of direct interaction and feedback with this system with the public and then also within staff too. So even if it's, you know, two in the morning and there's a catch basin flood issue, this notification will go out in email and for certain select items, like, you know, more urgent items like flooding, there is actually text message notifications to on-call staff too and also dispatch. So some items are marked confidential if it's a code thing, but other than that, everything is publicly available. And that concludes my little example here. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any, any, any questions? Yes, Karen.
I have a question, but I just want to say that I'm really excited about this and I know that you've been working really hard on it. And I just, I think it's going to make it so much easier for our department heads to know what our seasons need and for our seasons to know what the city is working on. So I'm really excited about this.
Thank you. And I actually thank you for saying that because I actually wanted to thank our department heads. I, they did a huge amount of effort helping me compile what we needed to put in there and really thought it through. And so thanks for seeing that and thanks to all the department heads too.
I know that the company we have been dealing with has been slow to come to the table with all the, the solutions that we're looking for in a timely manner, but I think you guys stuck with it. And so I, and I appreciate that because it's, you know, I know that this has been a while coming, working with this company and to integrate our existing website into this is, is good because it's still familiar, but it's still a lot of new things too. And I think that's a, I think, I think you guys did a great job on that. Is there, where are we at on the, on the outreach side of it in terms of notifying people of different events and, and council meetings and things like that? Is that part of this going forward?
Well, we do have, there is a system on there that people can sign up for email notifications. That's in place that they can sign up for that. We haven't got into it more than that, other than we are trying to do a better job with, and you probably noticed the, the constant contact system that Rebecca actually started also. The mayor and I both wrote a article, if you will, for that. And we contend, plan on continuing that on a monthly basis. The key still is getting people to sign up for that because constant contact even isn't only as good as those people that will register for us. So we'll push that out some more, probably through our utility bills and et cetera, to get more people to sign up for that. We are also looking more at other social media platforms such as Instagram. And we're, we're working on getting that up and going. I believe we have the account established. We just need to, again, get it started and get it going and get the content going on. So.
Well, I know with limited staff, I know content and that, that process is, is not an easy one and inconsistency and all that is, and I don't know timing wise and the ability to get all that done was on top of everything else we're doing, I imagine will be challenging. So I'm not, I'm not doing that. It's just the information that we do have to put out. I would like to, you know, make sure that that is able to get out and people can sign up for, for something. I got you, Patty. So, so yeah, so that's, that's kind of what I was looking at is, is not adding to, to the workload, but making it available, more available for the things that we do put out for people to sign up for.
Can I, can I follow up on that, Mayor? Correct me if I'm wrong, but when we do the constant contact, that automatically kicks into those other platforms also. Is that correct, Rebecca? So Instagram, et cetera.
Yeah, it actually goes out to the city's Facebook page and Twitter account.
Twitter, okay.
All right, Patty.
Cleve, did you say that the, what you were showing in the, in the, when it first appears, the videos and stuff, they're subject to change?
We can change them. Yeah, if we have more videos to add and we will get more. There's more and more drone video out there that's coming available and we will look at adding videos to that and over time. So yes.
Well, I'm on my usual soapbox. I really think we ought to feature Broadway and downtown and Placerville Drive. And, and I'm thinking like the car show, you know, isn't a constant. And I'm thinking maybe Gold Bug Park might be something because that's always, you know, subject to be visited and something that's happening all the time. You know, there's just a couple of things I was thinking about. So.
Okay, we will, we will look for more of those that we can, we can, and we can have more than just the, the kind of three or four clips that you saw there. We can add it to that too. So.
Yeah, yeah, that was a rather short loop. But I don't know how many people sit there and look at it as long as we did, but, but there was some interesting stuff there to watch. So definitely. All right, Councilmember Saragossa.
No, I was just going to say, I, I think it's great and I'm excited that we've got to this point, to Patty's play as well. I'd love to see some footage of the Placerville Drive and Broadway. So we know, we, you know, we hit all, all of our corridors throughout town for people to see as well, but looks great. So thank you, everybody for, for your work on this.
Absolutely.
I think, I think I look great and I, and I look forward to, and there's also more. This, there's more opportunities to build out on this platform than we had previously. And so as, as time permits, I hopefully we can look at expanding some of those options from there. So thank you, Cleve and Rebecca for your, for your, your, your show there. And show and tell, I guess. So thank you. All right. Any other comments for the good here? All right. Thank you very much again. See, see you none. Should we go to public comment on this particular item? Cleve, do you think we should go to public comment on this?
Oh, I thought you said we are. I'm, I'm fine with if you'd like to have some public comment on, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think so. Let's, let's go ahead. Mr. Connell, if we could open up for a public comment.
Sure, a public comment is open for item 6.2. This is the review of the new city website. And if you are joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. And you can press star six to unmute yourself. When I call upon you, I would call upon you using the last three digits of your phone number. And if you are joining by computer, use the raise hand option. And if you are joining by computer, use the raise hand option at the bottom of your screen. And everybody will have three minutes to speak and we'll start with Jane McInnes. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Jane. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that is so impressive. I am just absolutely blown away by this, the whole putting together of this website. But more than that, I just wanted to congratulate Cleve and Rebecca on this 311. I know companies like that can be forever to work with because as soon as they finish and succeed, the checks stop coming. So they take their time, but I spent 35 years in property management in and around Eldorado County. And that includes three o'clock in the morning, water main breaks, all the things that can happen. Fire sprinklers going off in commercial buildings when somebody drunk driver hits the, the wrong side of the building. And this is going to be just a total game changer for people who are working out there on facilities to be able to just call up 311 and report things instantly instead of trying to find a phone or making, hope you've got a signal and, and somehow get ahold of staff. So I just wanted to say I am so impressed with what you have all done. This is just great. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Those accolades are well deserved. So thank you very much for your comments. All right.
That's all we have.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to public comments, brief public comments on non-agendized items. Now, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of city council. The state law prohibits us from acting on these items not listed in the agenda except by special action by city council under specific circumstances. I reserve the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks individual, on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or may invade others' individual personal property. So with that, we'll go to written communications. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You did have, prior to the agenda being posted, there was one item that came in from the Placerville Downtown Association, basically regarding information that has been in the newspaper and et cetera lately. And council has that, that correspondence. It was, as mentioned, it's in your agenda. Also wanted to mention a couple of other items that came in since the agenda was posted. They are related to primarily to items 12.4 and 12.5 on your agenda tonight. Those came, there was one that came from Brian Chase from the Placerville Downtown Association, one from Ruth Michelson and one from Nicole Gottberg. And the council was provided those emails when they came, when they came through and you can consider those as part of those agenda items.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. All right. Moving on to item 7.2, oral communication. And I will turn this over to Ms. O'Connell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public comment is now open for any item not on the agenda. We'll start with Sue Rodman. Go ahead.
Good evening, Sue.
Good evening, City Council. It's now almost March and we've got March and April to get ready for fire season because our ordinance says by the first of May, we are really supposed to be in good shape. But there's a lot of places that are not in good shape yet. And I'd like to know how the city council, how are you making progress with those large property owners that still need to reduce their hazardous vegetation loads? I'm thinking Lumsen Ranch, I'm thinking of the property up around Escaton. That definitely needs some work and I'm wondering how, what's the progress on getting somebody to do something about those? And how are we doing with taking a look at our streets? I know the Fire Safe Council says they're going to do a street inventory. And one of the things we're looking at is dead end roads and egress. Because when you only have one way in and one way out, it had better be clear. So you're not trying to drive through the fire to get out. And the other thing is those fire gates. And have we made any progress with thinking about what to do about those? Because in a fire, will the fire department be able to get to those gates in time to open them to let people out? So those are some of my concerns. And of course, the usual beg of please, people, get it done. You've got two months now and then we'll be in fire season and things will be restricted. So thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening. As a member of the public, I would like to share with you some observations about the February ninth city council meeting related to item 12.1. Zoom meetings are not the best way to hold public hearings. They're impersonal, especially where the public is involved. Your last meeting was the first time I had participated in a meeting where a big giant timer filled up the screen and counted down the three minutes. The public is trying to express their thoughts on very important agendized city issues and it makes people think the council is more interested in the clock than the comments. I think it would be more respectful if there was a way to have a small clock down in the corner and the speaker would be able to see the council members while they are talking, just like a town hall meeting. In contrast, at that meeting, the relationship between the council and the applicant seemed too cozy. It felt as if the council and applicant were sitting in the same room and the public was outside somewhere. In a town hall meeting, once the applicant has made their presentation, they sit down. In a Zoom meeting, it's as if the applicant were sitting up with the council the entire time. After the applicant has made their presentation, their camera and audio could be turned off and only back on if the council has a question. After the applicant's presentation on item 2.1, the mayor immediately opened up public comment, which seemed very unusual without having a period for the council to ask questions first. The questions that the council asked are helpful to the public making comments on the item. Once the public hearing was closed, the council and applicant then had a rather lengthy discussion. One council member made a comment that sounded like the early bird gets the worm or first come, first served in relation to the idea that no one else has applied for a grant or made a proposal. While that may be how private business works, it doesn't seem to me the way local government should work. Another council member used the term what about isms and went on to say, no one else is asked to put up a $300,000 sign. These comments remind me of an old adage, if it's good for business, it's good for you. So learn to live with it. Good planning includes, not excludes, the public. Then after a motion was made and seconded by the council at that meeting, but before the vote was taken, the applicant was asked two additional questions and was allowed to speak for approximately six more minutes, which seemed highly unusual. A city needs long range planning involving the public, not piecemeal planning where one organization is allowed to put their hat in the ring because they did it first. These are just a few things to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughts on that, Kathy. I appreciate it.
Caller with the last three digits, five two five. Go ahead.
Yes, we can.
This is Leo Bennett, Coach Sean. And I know you received a letter from the Racial Equity Anchor Collaborative. And I know and I appreciate council members Taylor's hard work, but there is a saying in the social justice community that justice delayed can end up being justice denied. So I'm going to read you what you've heard, but so that the public can hear it also. It's just a summary. And the collaborative is urging you to immediately adopt a more inclusive emblem worthy of all your people. It goes on to say that perhaps more than any other single graphic image, the noose is widely recognized as a hate symbol by multiple authorities on the subject. Based on substantial social science research, we also believe that symbols that venerate violence against or the subjugation of people of color are inherently harmful in a multiracial society. Skipping, the collaborative states, we acknowledge that some opponents of changing the existing logo defended under the guise of protecting important aspects of the city's heritage dating back to its founding during the gold rush. Note that we are not asking that all references to that era be extinguished. On the contrary, we believe that it is essential that images like this be preserved in history books, museums, and in other ways where their context can be fully explained. What we object to is the city placing its official quote seal of approval on images and phrases that tacitly glorify the shameful practice of lynching. It is long past time for you to stop providing the city's informant an official sanction to Placerville's history of mob violence and lynching. We urge the removal of the official offensive images and phrases from your official materials. And we respectfully request the courtesy of a formal reply within 30 days. Sincerely, the Advancement Project National Office, Asian Pacific Islanders, the American Health Forum, Demos, Faith and Action, Placer People of Faith Together, NAACP, National Congress of American Indians, National Urban League, Race Forward, and ANIDA. I'd like to request and I'll follow up with a written, a copy of your formal reply. I am very confident that you will engage in dialogue with these national folks and hopefully be able to move beyond the long, arduous process and begin our steps forward. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments, Leo.
Ruth Michelson, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I wanted to say that I do concur with everything Kathy Lishman said. Regardless of the outcome of that item last time, I did think it was a rather irregular process. And I would ask that you review the process that occurred for that item 12.1. This is very short and direct. City manager Cleve Morris mentioned letters for 12.4, 12.5. I also submitted a letter for 12.1 and I wanted to make sure that that was recognized and that you've received that. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruth.
Call in user two, go ahead.
Hello there. Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. Good evening. I have a couple of comments and I will not be taking any questions. First, it's reported that the board is considering purchasing a motel in Placerville to house the homeless. I completely support this plan. And I think we need to have a directed plan to address this issue. But I cannot emphasize enough that any plan to house the homeless has got to include supervision. If it doesn't, we're merely going to be trading one problem for another. San Francisco did this about a year and ago. It became a horrendous mess. And so we, we need to learn from that. Not sure whether or not you have jurisdiction, but I'm pretty sure you probably work with the county a number of different other issues and so we, we can consider this. I hope, I hope you do. I received an open letter, as you did, from some nebulous organization. I think a caller has already referred to it on the matter of town's name and the noose. Letter has one purpose in my view, and that's to intimidate and to bully. And it needs to be discarded, not to the recycle bin, but to the incinerator. Runs contrary to the recent proclamation against hate and bullying that you passed a couple of weeks ago. And, and on this topic, minutes of the council action on 126 of this year, on item 12.1, city logo, I think. So the council returned on 2.9, unstructured process. That didn't happen. Not on tonight's agenda either. Seems like it's kind of starting to get stinky. It's bad enough the scope of this item has been expanded from the original item of July 14, or whenever it was, and I would hope we don't need a public records request and meetings, phone calls, office appointments, calendars and other notes to find out what's going on. There's no transparency with this and it's unfortunate. I'm in the camp, we simply put it to a vote of the people. I don't want to diminish the other side's views. Now, there's a lot of folks out here that are really unhappy about how this is being handled. So, and then lastly, I just want to say I think Placerville is quite comfortable with this image. Thank you very much, despite what some other folks seem to think. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Melinda Velasco, go ahead.
So I'm going to say right off the bat that I'm not quite happy with the news. And I do have four decades here in town. And the nebulous organizations that were referred to include the NAACP, Unidos US, which has been working for decades as well in this country, the National Urban League. These are not nebulous organizations. These are national organizations that have noticed that we're continuing to promote the noose as our town logo. It's outdated. People who cling to it are claiming that it's about white people's history. And, you know, when you had a policy in, well, when you had a native policy, a policy, I'm looking at the 1850s where the governor of California had a policy to, to lynch and murder native people in town and around this whole area where they would pay you for scalps, hands, bodies and heads of native people. This, and, and referred to the slaughter of the natives as lynching, which included hanging. This is, this is not some kind of warm and fuzzy story about someone who stole money. Not only that, but the history is completely, it contradicts, all the history is different. You've got, I, I looked at visiteldorado.com. It says Drydiggins was nicknamed Hangtown after several men were hung from an oak tree. It became Placerville in 1854. Okay, that's one. Then I looked at hangmanstree.com, became Hangtown when three men were convicted for robbery, murder and attempted murder, then hanged in 1849. However, if there was no court, how were they convicted? There's no conviction because there's, people have said there was no court. So therefore people had to take the law into their own hands. So they were tried by the miners. On Doug's, Doug's something or other dot com, they were, it was supposedly horse stealing and robbery. On the plaque on Main Street, it says vigilantes executed many men for, many men for various crimes. The stump of the tree is under the building. I mean, people claim that that's about history, but yet not even the history is clear. If you can't get the history clear and nobody agrees on what happened and yet it's substantiated that the governor of California was calling for the lynching of native people, that Mexican people were hung here. Not so many African Americans, because there was a policy at that time that African Americans who were slaves here, look at your history, had to leave after they did three years of service here. So they had to leave town. It was, it was a whole thing to not have African Americans around. I'm talking about in the 1840s and 50s. So that's why there wasn't a huge, you know, group of African Americans that were hung. But there were Chinese, the greatest massacre of Chinese people was lynching of Chinese peoples right here in California. Is that the kind of history that we want to preserve? Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda.
And C, go ahead.
Thank you. That is a great segue. I really appreciate the, the actual looking into history there. And, you know, we, we do need to find a way to, to, to really be looking at, at the history. I mean, that's what this, this place is all about is, is this history. And I just really appreciated, you know, just that, that, that the last caller was, was really searching for that. And I guess with that, I'll just say, you know, I did ask, it was a written communication that was talked about, you know, putting something on the agenda. I understand that a presentation, it sounds like of a special topic, although there's been other special topics like Lincoln Highway Association signs and various things. But I, I appreciated that Mayor Thomas mentioned other people expressed interest in presenting views about the Clay Street Bridge project. And I guess I just never did hear back in my emails about whether John Driscoll actually thought there was any legal reason why we couldn't have a community event where. thought there was any legal reason why we couldn't have a community event where different perspectives on the Clay Street Bridge project could... Because this is going to involve a lot of historic resources. It's going to involve, you know, changing, you know, a part of town that has been laid out the way it has been for, you know, decades, you know, back to the 1800s, and it's truly to understand what we're talking about takes a little time to look at it. And I guess I'm just asking again, for a community event, we can have the different perspectives on it, not just my presentation. I think there was some other people requesting to present views, and that is a segue into, you know, I know that the evacuation topic, you know, is going to come up in conjunction project, and I pursue Rodman and the Fire Safe Council and Patty Borelli's involvement, and, you know, just, I will send it to City Council, I sent it to a couple of folks, but, you know, we really do need to educate people about the road system from an evacuation standpoint, not any single route, but all the routes available to them, because in an emergency, it could be many different scenarios. And so, you know, I had shared a map prepared by, you know, people in West Sonoma County who recently had an evacuation scenario, and it is something that we need to do, which means looking at all your evacuation options, not any single one. So I hope we'll be able to do that, and, you know, I have some other comments. I'm hoping we're going to be able to talk about the traffic calming manual as well, but I did hear today from trafficlogics.com's salesperson that Rebecca's buying some more speed trackers, and appreciate that, you know, it sounds like we're going to at least be doing some more monitoring about some of these traffic patterns that are, you know, influenced by the Highway 50 situation and the growth and the Highway 50 hotspot recreation situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Jane McInnes, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to take us back to maybe spring of last year. The joint resolution of county and city had been published, and the armory became a focal point and a lightning rod. There was public comment that poured into the Board of Supervisors and poured into the City Council for that particular meeting. And some of the negative comments were truly horrific. I just, the only way I can refer to them is the excrement comments. There were some ugly, horrifying things said about the homeless. And I assumed from reading them that they were from people who had gone walking in the woods and found the products of human digestion, which is what happens when people have nowhere to go to the bathroom. The homeless have a lack of access to means of basic sanitation, basic hygiene, and their lack of access is being used as a weapon against them by people who don't know or don't care what their life is like. You do know, and I truly believe that you care, I know that you care. What I wanted to ask tonight, I think is a small thing. Could you please talk among yourselves and ask staff to find out what the cost of providing and maintaining a number of porta-potties on some of our city's streets would be and where they could best be placed for easiest access by the homeless? I think you're also going to find some tourists that will be very grateful, too. Suppliers are local. It shouldn't take more than two weeks to get this information to you. Look at the activities that are currently funded for sanitation or public health, and I truly believe people as quick-witted as your staff can find the dollars it would take to fund such a small program. But it would have such a huge impact physically and emotionally and spiritually on these people. People who are seen as animals are going to come to see themselves that way. And I believe it is our duty as human beings to prevent that from happening. Thank you. God bless all of you for the job that you're doing, and I hope that the Lord will lead you to this small step. Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you very much. Jane.
Caller 857, go ahead.
Good evening, Michael.
Hey, wasn't going to call in except for that last caller saying public porta-potties for the homeless around the city. Somebody, that previous speaker, is completely unaware of how San Francisco went through this over the last fifteen years, and other cities, and how it turned out. You're all very educated people. I'm very sure you know how it turned out. But if you want to, you know, placate her and put up an experiment, put a porta potty on the trail somewhere, and say, we'll monitor this for thirty, sixty, ninety days, whatever it is, and then you can be educated on how it turns out. So it becomes useless for anyone else. It becomes abused. I cannot believe some people are crouching this in the Word of God. I understand their compassion, they do not understand the outcome. It has been proven over the years, and they really, I've just had it with this group, because, anyway, I've had it with this group. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Mayor, I see no further public comments.
All right. Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. And so, just a couple of notes here. Sue Rodman, this with regard to the fire safety and such, I know that these items are on the city's agenda, and they are working on them. If you want any further information, I urge you to contact Pierre, he has that information. Yes, the County Board of Supervisors is considering purchasing, it's at early stages, and we definitely have input on that project and what's going on, however, that's a ways down the road before they look at that. And Jennifer Chapman, I encourage you to contact the Historical Society and consider looking at ways to create a community dialogue around what you're looking for. And I think that's all the notes I have. So thank you, everybody, for your written communications, and I'd like to go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. And all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call. Vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So, does Council have any comments, or would I have to pull anything on the consent calendar? Yes, Patty?
I'd like to, I don't necessarily have to pull it, but 8.10, and I'd like to ask City Manager Cleve Morris to make a comment on it, and that's it.
Does Cleve know what comment he's wanting? He's wondering, okay, great. Perfect. All right. Any other questions or comments regarding the consent calendar? All right. Seeing none, Cleve, if you'd like.
Yeah, perhaps it'd be best if I make that now before you open up public comment. The question has come up, why this item, it was on our agenda last meeting due to timing it was pulled off, and why that was moved from a regular item on our last meeting to a consent item on this agenda. This is purely because we've had this on our agenda twice now. We had a public forum on it. Prior to that, we had a meeting when we introduced it to the public, and we've taken quite a bit of input on that. We feel we've answered the concerns, and our goal at this point was to move this forward for adoption. As always, a consent calendar can be pulled if the council determines you want to do that, and we are prepared to answer any questions you may have and respond to questions from the public on that. But that is the sole reason it was moved to consent, was simply we feel it was in pretty much a final form, and we were ready to move forward. So that's my comment on that.
All right. Thank you, Cleve. And seeing no further comments from the Council, I'll go ahead and, I guess we get a first motion, and then we'll open up for public comment.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, first and second. Now, if we could, so, we could go ahead and open this up for public comment.
Consent calendar is now open. We'll take Elizabeth Kubos, go ahead.
Hi there, this is Lizzie. I had my hand raised for the previous public comment, if I can add to that.
Lizzie, we didn't have any hands raised during that time. When we signed off, there were no more hands up. I'm not sure what happened there. If you could go ahead and take a brief moment?
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, thank you for letting me speak on this. It has been brought to my attention that the Placerville City Council has opened and received a letter that has been posted on February 17, 2021. I have read and reread this letter, followed by multiple articles written in the past and in the present regarding the city's graphic illustrations of the noose, hanging tree, the term Hangtown, and any related symbols and phrases from your seal and logo. The request to remove the noose and update the city's seal has been submitted to your attention on numerous occasions. In all due respect to Mayor Taylor and City Council members, I am deeply offended by your conscious decision to continue to ignore and table this item. I know that you are aware of the need to address this letter now. The longer you table this, the longer we have to plan, the longer I have to think about your actions to do nothing. I want you to know that I am angry, but not at you, with you. I am not here to fight fire with fire, but fight fire with water. It is my purpose to beat anger with peace, nonviolent resistance, and to make changes today for a more social and just tomorrow. May I remind you that presently today, we are in Black History Month. I, as a black woman, will celebrate Black History in Eldorado County 365 days a year. It is my understanding that colonizers have succeeded to conquer native land, heritage, and destroy our ability to heal and rest. But what they will never take away from me is my joy. Black joy will never be colonized here. Let's give the black community permission to heal and rest here. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Michelle, go ahead for consent calendar.
Hello there, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, Michelle. Thank you for calling in.
Okay, wonderful. I will be very, very brief. I caught my, put my hand up right at the end of open comments, so I won't take too much time, but I did just want to kind of ask the City Council how big they want this to get. You know, you just received a letter from Unidos, you just received a letter that comes from people like the NAACP. Like, this is gaining momentum. This is a snowball, and I just wonder if you're prepared for national attention and how far you're going to let this get. You cannot delay this with bureaucracy, you can't push it aside with delays. So I just want you to consider that, and I thank you for my time.
Thank you for keeping it short, Michelle. Let's go on, let's go ahead and go with consent calendar items now. Thank you.
NC, go ahead.
Okay, Jen, put her hand down.
Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
I have a question about 8.10, and maybe I don't understand it completely, but I wondered, as I read through it, I wondered how some of the issues related to traffic calming can be incorporated into new development. I didn't know, I didn't really see that in this, and I just wondered if the city could really think about that when new projects come in, both on the new project neighborhood and on the surrounding neighborhoods, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Caller 857, go ahead.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Michael.
Hey, I just have a question. So our city, our police chief has always been selected by the Council. Is there any way in our government system that that could be an elected position? Because there's always, I prefer the elected, you know, like the sheriff. The sheriff is the constitutionally elected position, right? Is there any way that can happen in our city? And that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Caller 846, go ahead.
Hi, this is Jennifer. I had lost my other type of connection, but I just wanted to really say this, this traffic calming manual still really needs discussion, and I appreciate that there was some response to some written comments that I wrote, but there was a lot of comments at the neighborhood chat, and my, you know, there's a lot of things right now, but the diagram in here of the flow chart, for instance, figure one, it shows that the process actually stops if there is some kind of, in this case, a speed trailer. And, you know, so for us on Clay Street, you know, we're sitting here looking at this, and it seems to be a message that we're not going to study the problem anymore because we are monitoring with this, you know, this device that we've put down by mosquito. But Clay Street is a long windy road, there's multiple points that need to be monitored. There are blind spots, there are curves, even a city sign says, "Slow down to twenty" at the curves. Well, the whole street is curved. So, you know, I've been, I was trying to do some monitoring, actually, with one of the street speed tracker devices that it sounds like the city's acquiring. I just want to say that we really need to do more monitoring at different points, and you need to consult with the neighborhood about where to put any kind of monitoring device that you're putting. But right now, as it is, this document is not ready to go. There's a problem with that particular, you know, part of the flow chart, and, you know, we appreciate that you're only now asking for ten signatures on a petition to initiate things, but we also feel that, I believe the manual is still really relying on neighborhoods to pay for all these devices, and when you're talking about problems generated by a freeway that goes across the nation, I mean, this is a, this is, you know, a major highway impact that is bleeding over into neighborhoods. We need the city to help us with these traffic situations and the calming, traffic calming needs that we have. There are resources out there, and I just feel like we need more discussion about what's really going on in these neighborhoods. So anyway, I just hope that you will provide more opportunity to have dialogue about this, and I just don't think that the manual is ready yet.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, Ed Ingram, go ahead.
Ed, it looks like you're on mute still.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening, Ed. We got you.
Very good. Yeah, I reviewed the traffic calming plan that you got. It looks pretty nice. I think some of the options you got in there really don't even fit for the mountainous areas in the city of Placerville for confined areas that we got with some of the diagrams of slowing traffic. One of the other questions I have is, where were these ideas for the traffic calming measures comprised of, were they by city of Placerville standards, previously the federal standards, county or state, or any other municipalities? And also, on another question, is there a timeframe from the plan initiation process that you got to the City Council approval implementation of six months to a year? Is there a deadline for the data to get the process going? Again, I like some of the different ideas you got in there. Number eighteen, raise crosswalks, very good idea. Number twenty-five, return restrictions, signs and additional signage, very good idea. And these are some of the things we brought up with the Clay Street initiations in the previous, that we could really use additionally on the Clay Street itself. Again, appreciate, thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Ed.
Sean Clarici, go ahead.
Good evening, John.
I'm muted now. Hi there. I don't know what number it is, but I just want to give a shout out to Chief Wren and him becoming, I guess you've got all the paperwork signed, and I think Joe was just a great addition in that position, and I always liked his perspective. We don't always agree on it. We don't always agree on everything, but when we've had our discussions, he always has a good reason for what he's thinking, what he's doing. He brings a real good perspective, I think, to that position. And I'm just glad that you guys have finally got all the ink dry and all the contracts. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
No further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Thank you very much. Now, there were a few questions in there, but most of them were statements. You know, a matter of a discussion right now. I see that the traffic calming is not, is, and I don't think it'll ever be a perfect document for everybody because there's, there's always opportunities for improvement. And I think that while there might be a minor error in the flow chart, I don't think it takes away from the entire document. So I don't, I don't look at that as a reason to bring that out. Any other comments? All right, seeing that I do, I would like to second John Trici's comments with the chief of police. I think we made a great decision bringing him on, and, and I appreciate all his work in this last challenging year. And, you know, with, with some of the challenging things we've had lately, I think he has done a terrific job. He is, he has worked tirelessly on some of these issues that we've dealt with lately, and I, and I can, I can see that. So with that, let's get a roll call. Regina, please.
Member Barelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Nell.
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa. Vice Mayor Taylor. Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. And moving on to, we have no items pulled from the consent calendar. Moving on to ordinances, item number 10.1, waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Placerville, amendment section 1-14-3A of the Placerville Municipal Code, setting the time for city council meetings. And I turn this over to city manager, Tim Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item was up on your last agenda, introduce the ordinance to change our meeting time to start at 5:00 rather than 6:00. The staff report is basically the same, talks about some of the issues, pros and cons associated with that. However, the direction of the last meeting was to bring this forward for, for adoption. I did include some items in here referring to a suggestion that was made that perhaps we could rearrange our agendas so that some of the less controversial or less public comment items could be handled early on in the agenda and then public comment, and the remaining agenda items occur after that. I put kind of a suggestion in your agenda of how that would work. We can come back and further approve that at a later date. This will not take effect until your April 13th meeting. So we can do some work on the order of agenda and bring that to you in March for consideration to finalize the order of agenda and how we'll move forward with that. So with that, unless there's any questions, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there any additional questions for Cleve? All right, seeing that, let's go ahead.
I have one, just a quick, quick question, Mr. Mayor. I guess my one, and I think I had mentioned this the last time, was I don't see any reason why. I mean, we kind of know for the most part when we're going to have more comments than not on an issue, that why that couldn't be worked out with the mayor and city manager to move around the agenda for that particular meeting, you know, if we needed to, to get it as needed basis, not always, not even that often. But we will have times when we maybe have more public comment orders, a 12-point, something that is going to have more, and we can look at that. I just, is there discretion to be able to do that within this context?
Yes, I believe there is. Yes.
And that's, I mean, I think that's all we really need, as opposed to try to find this perfect mesh that probably is not likely. Because there's always going to be something that someone doesn't like, but if the mayor has that ability, then I see we're in a good spot.
I would agree. As we, as we go through, go through this process of each, each couple of weeks, we look at the, at the agenda, we do try and sort things out in such a way that it, that meets the needs of the community and puts some things last and some things first that, that apply. So I, you know, and I think I've asked the question, there's nothing in our, in our handbook or in our city code that requires the agenda be in any specific order. Is that, as far as we can know, Cleve?
That's correct. As I recall in the handbook, I didn't go back and look at that, but it does talk about things that will be on the agenda, you know, ordinances, public comment, et cetera. But it doesn't necessarily dictate what the order of those items will be. As you recall, in the past, there's been times when we've actually reordered the agenda. I know we put the public comments at one time was at the end of the agenda rather than the beginning of the agenda. So there's various actions the council has taken to reorder the agenda throughout time based on specific circumstances.
All right, thank you. Any, any other comments? All right, seeing that, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Mr. Connell.
Public comment is now open for item 10.1, the ordinance amendment setting the time for city council meetings. We will start with caller 857. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Michael.
Okay, so the planning commission has bylaws that they adopt and they review every year. And it lays out the schedule and how their meetings will progress. And I don't think the city council has the same thing. So number one, I'd like to see the city council adopt bylaws that structure how the meetings are to be held, and they can refresh them every year. They can refresh them mid-year, doesn't matter. But to have a known quantity of how meetings are going to progress and what order things are going to happen in, I really like, at the first reading of this ordinance, I spoke, and then after me, a lady spoke about a time certain for public comment. And I thought, that's brilliant. That's how the county does it. They have a time certain, they're doing business, they get through it, they pause, they say, okay, time certain item now. And then they go through that, and when that's over, then they go back to what they paused, and they continue business. That is just a great way of doing business. De facto, over the recent years, public comment has always come roughly at 6:30 anyway. So I like the idea of 6:30 public comment. It's not written into the draft ordinance, though. So I'd either like to see it written into the draft ordinance, which you could do, or to adopt that you will create bylaws and then follow those and refresh them every year or whatever. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
Hello, I, I have some comments to make. My husband just walked in the room, and so he's gone. A long time ago, when we had city council at 7:30 and we changed it to seven, we always had closed session afterwards. So that is, that is also, if you wanted to start at five and not have closed session so early, you could have closed session after. Another thing is, sometimes the council sets an agenda, then when you get to the meeting, they change the order. And that doesn't work out good for people who are coming for a specific item, so I wanted to have you keep that in mind. Maybe the council reports from other agencies could be at the 5:00 time because it would be interesting for people to hear those and know that later on, if it's 6:00 when public comment is, but the council reports from other agencies and announcements and consent calendar. Anyway, I think that was all that I wanted to say. I know there was something else, and I didn't write it down, so. Oh, I know what I wanted to say. I think there's nothing wrong with changing public comment on non-agendized items to two minutes. I think that you've had an awful lot of public comment on non-agenda items recently. And I know I took my three minutes tonight, but that was because I knew I had three minutes. But I think that there's nothing wrong with having public comment on non-agendized items be two minutes instead of three. And then agendized items, giving people three minutes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kathy.
Jane McInnes, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to Michael because I'm the lady who suggested the stated time. And I'm, I'm kind of hoping for 6:00. I don't see any problem with going from three minutes to two minutes. If you have something to say, I think it's a courtesy to everybody on the council that we should be succinct and organized and have our thoughts in order. But it sure would be nice if we could do it at 6:00. That was it. Just wanted to say that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jane. Appreciate it.
Caller 525, go ahead.
Hello. This is a little tongue-in-cheek, but perhaps you could think about a different day of the week because I attended the board of supervisors meeting from 9:00 to 4:00 and then got a break, and here I am. But hey, that's my job as a public citizen nerd, right? In terms of public comment, I would urge you to have your lawyer look into it. Been doing this a long time. There's been evolution from five minutes to three minutes. Some people do try to. But there was also litigation about, you know, how long is an effective public comment allowed? And two minutes is starting to really push being able to make a point. An alternative suggestion I've seen some councils consider is to make public time comment time certain, both in the beginning of it and end of it, and then have a second public comment at the end of the meeting for these times. Because I do agree, you have to get your business done, and if public comment just goes on and on, it starts to interfere with that flow. So good luck trying to balance all of these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo.
There are no other public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I truly appreciate all the, all the comments and suggestions, and they're worthy of consideration. And, and I think that's something that as we move forward, we can certainly look into. I know that we have something before us that I would like to move forward. Is there, is there, is this the second reading, Cleve, on this? Okay. So anything that, any changes, just for clarification, any changes that if we were to make on this, would have to go back? This would be, this would be a new first meeting, a first reading, and then we have to go to a second reading again?
It depends on how substantive those changes are, and depending on what it is, I would refer to the city attorney to determine whether or not that constitutes a major change or requires us to reintroduce the ordinance.
And before we start going down that road too far, if we do at all, John?
I was just going to say what Cleve said is correct. Any substantive changes would require it to go back for another first reading. Changes of a clerical nature do not require that.
All right. And this is, this is, this is specifically only about the start time. So anything beyond that, we would be going, kind of circling back and looking at something different again. And, you know, with all due respect to the comments, and I think they're great, we will be, we are having our core governance workshop coming up. And I know that there'll be a lot of interesting discussions had in that time period over the several months. And, and I do know that, you know, this, this could be part of that discussion if we choose to in terms of our core governance and, and how we want to go on from here. I do know that if you look at the county's handbooks, they do address some things in terms of public comment. And maybe we want to look at this from a more holistic point of view from, at that time. And any, any further comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would disagree with that. I think that is a really good time for us to take a look at this again from that. Like you say, from the bigger picture of it and how that fits into, you know, the public interaction in two minutes, three minutes, any of those things in order. I think it's a good time for that to come up. I mean, this was just on the start, start time of the meetings. And so we always have the ability to go back, as you mentioned, and do a date, a time certain, if you want to, on a, on public comments or some of the other, you know, suggestions that were listed today.
Right. Any other further comments? All right, seeing that, if we could have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Connell.
We haven't made a motion yet.
Oh, well, would somebody like to do a motion?
The resolution.
Yes. All right, I have three now. I'm going to go with Jackie, I think, got the second. I think you're next, Karen. Now we're going to roll call.
Okay. Oh, actually, can I just make one comment?
Please.
Last time this came up, I voted against it because, for two reasons, I'm in the public largely. And the second reason was that it was going to make my schedule more difficult. So I'm going to vote against this again, but this isn't something I feel strong about. So I'm just voting against it to be consistent with my previous vote. So I just want to make sure it's not, there's no contention or anything.
You're not going to be mad at us?
I'm not going to be mad at you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, great. All right. Now, how about a roll call vote?
Councilmember Barelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Nell.
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa. Vice Mayor Taylor.
No.
Mayor Thomas.
Hi. All right. Thank you all for that. And I have misplaced my agenda. There we go. All right, moving on to, we have no public hearings. And let's see, discussion item, item number 12, discussion and action items, 12.1. Adopt a resolution extending the no-fee temporary sidewalk and street dining for temporary outdoor dining applications and for utilizing private parking areas through May 31st, 2001, 2021, to the businesses restricted from allowing indoor patronage. And take public comment and provide any direction regarding traffic closures on Main Street. And I'm going to, we're going to go to Pierre for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll be brief. The staff report basically characterizes the COVID-19 situation we're currently in, so I won't repeat that. But essentially, just going back in history a little bit, it was back in June of last year that the council approved outdoor dining for, for restaurants at that time that couldn't do inside dining. And that included the sidewalk and within the, right away, the parking stalls along Main Street. The whole program has been quite successful. I think it's kept a number of our restaurants viable and alive. There's two parts to this staff report. One is considering of the outdoor dining. And the second one is, is consideration of closure of Main Street to sort of expand the outdoor dining experience by closing traffic to, to vehicles and only pedestrians so that the restaurants in, in Marseille could then occupy the sidewalks and the streets. That was at the request of our Placerville Economic Advisory Committee. They had actually discussed that on numerous occasions. But at their last meeting on February the 12th of this year, they wanted to make sure that we brought that to the attention of council for any further discussion. The council did with respect to the outside, outdoor dining. They directed staff to come back at the end of December. It is now February, so we're coming back to you with a request to continuing the program through May of this year, pending any changes in our current status as a purple county. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Morris. If he has any additional comments on these items, he may. But with that, that concludes staff's report, and we can answer any questions you have at this time. Yeah, just quickly, a couple of comments. I want, I want to stress that I don't believe the, the recommendation from the peak that it be considered was, how can I put it, not a real strong recommendation. How's that? They, they agreed to at least bring it forward to consideration. But I will say, from our perspective in talking to businesses and et cetera, they, I do not feel that that would be feasible for us to do in our downtown based on the, the way our traffic flows through Main Street.
based on the, the way our traffic flows through Main Street and the parking issue on Main Street. I think there would be some problems with us closing down our entire street for that purpose. I also wanted to, I'll, I'll do this publicly, apologize to Ruth Michelson. Her letter did address this issue specifically and that was provided to the council. So you do have that. So I apologize to Ruth and you please, you, you have that for consideration on this side of the muscle. Thank you.
Thank you, Cleve. Any, any questions from council to staff? All right. I do have one question. I have a couple, actually. So there's a, within the application process, there's a whole harmless clause for the city. Are we getting right, what do you call it, additional assurance on every, on all these individuals? Restaurants or businesses with their insurance that they're insuring, because they're actually on city property. And I know any events that are ever on city property, whether it's in, in, in our town hall or on the street, if you're having an event that they're required to provide and indemnify the, the city and, and show proof of insurance for that space. Is that, is that actually happening?
Yes, it is. We do ensure that we receive a, a sort of a, a cert certification from their insurance carrier listing the city as an additional insured. The two latest applicants, there is one, one particular restaurant that we have not received that yet. And it has been, it's been a few weeks, so we will notify them that they're going to have to stop their outdoor dining unless we receive that from them.
All right. And then a, another issue on the, well, I think, I think I'll go with that for now and, and we'll go to public comment.
Before.
Yeah, just go ahead. I'm sorry, didn't see that.
Well, before we move on, I, because I, this last thing that Pierre was talking about, you said that you will notify them. What steps will you take to make it, you know, make it stick, that they can't defy us and just go ahead and keep? Because this is a, a real big issue, you know, this insurance thing. And if they don't comply, the city is really, you know, could be facing some money issues.
Could be a liability issue for me. I'll just let the council know that typically we have been able to receive the additional insured certification the same day. And it's my understanding, it's a 25 to $45 fee. It's not, it, it, it's not a big expense for the restaurant entity to, to get that to us. And so there really isn't an excuse why they can't get it. Could be just, they're just busy or it's going to take us to basically say, you either got to provide it or you're not going to be able to engage in the outdoor dining within city right away.
All right. And I, I guess I'll ask an additional question. The, the non-restaurant businesses like sidewalk sale type things on the street, is that, is that, is that part of this permit process? Because it appears that it's really talking about businesses that are unable to have people patronize the, the business inside. And this program can do that.
Yes. This, this program originally started to assist the restaurants because without the ability to provide for inside dining, they were, they were done as a business entity. We did expand it. It's a staff level to allow retail to do the same, under the same permit. So we did expand it to, to retail, but retail is now permitted to have indoor customers. So we would like to receive additional direction from the council to basically eliminating then retail from having that. But I do want to give one caveat that we do have some retail businesses that do apply for a temporary use permit. And that's for special events, like maybe special sales on a weekend or something like that. But on an ongoing basis, staff is recommending that we discontinue the program for retail entities.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Ms. O'Callaghan, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Public comment is open for item 12.1. This is the temporary outdoor dining item. We will start with Sue Rodman. Go ahead.
Good evening, council, again.
Good evening, Sue.
Please do not close Main Street. I think that it will backfire and cause all Main Street businesses to lose customers. People are understanding and they're supporting the sidewalk, street dining. But Main Street closures are not a solution. The Bell Tower Farmers Market already effectively closes a portion of Main Street and makes the parking garage largely unusable. We finally got rid of weekend closures on Main Street, so let's not bring them back. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
T W Bonkers, go ahead.
Hello, Tony. Taking my call, welcome. Hello, councilmembers. I just want to echo Cleveland and say, yeah, the closing of Main Street down is, is really not a good idea. We, we can effectively turn into a ghost town when that happens. And the only other thing I would like to say, you know, restaurants are definitely a key money driver to Main Street. When they weren't allowed to be inside and had to be outside during the freezing cold, we definitely noticed a drop in business, drop in traffic, because the restaurants are a beacon for tourists and for our locals. So I really do think that we got to figure that out because there's a little double dipping going on with inside and outside right now. But all I ask is if you, the restaurants that have their outdoor tents, is just try to make them look really nice. Enchanted Forest is, is really killing it there on Main. And, and there are some places that look like tents from the movie MASH. So if we could just up the game a little bit and not close the street, I'm all for it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Tony.
Ruth Michelson, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Now, see, you received my letter, so I don't need to repeat any of that. I, I, I feel that the restaurant should be supported in every way that they can. And I just think that if there were a clause that they stopped using those outside tents for some number of weeks, that maybe it'd be, the tent be disbanded or taken down. What's the point? I mean, I, I, I know that the regulations, the mandates change, but my guess is that we're not moving in the direction of stricter mandates. We're going to be moving in the direction of less strict mandates. So that's just a, a concern. I mean, I know May 31st, it'll be just right around the corner and this just goes till May 31st. So, and the weather will be good. And anyway, at least if it, if they still have to eat outdoors, maybe some of those tents will be taken down and they can just have smaller umbrellas. Couple of things I do want to mention though, beyond what my letter said is, it has to do with enforcement issues like City Councilwoman O'Reilly mentioned, that had to do with insurance. But I'm just curious about enforcement of, let's just say, you know, you have so many spaces, but yet there's someone who's taking up two and a third space. What good does it do if you're taking up two and a third, two thirds of a space you can't park in? So why are they taking up two and a third? I mean, come on, bring it in a little bit. And what was the other point? Yes, I wanted to say that, this is another enforcement question. As you know, I'm a merchant on Main Street and I'm friends with many of the merchants on Main Street. And one merchant has been upset. I'm not going to name names of the merchant nor the restaurant. It doesn't need to be public knowledge. I can speak privately to whomever am I. This person has privately already spoken to Pierre about her situation. But she had requested that they're not, she's not a restaurant. And she requested there not be a restaurant tent in front of her store for a variety of reasons. One in which because her, because when that, when that booth is overflowing with people, which earlier on it was, her customers couldn't socially distance to get into her store. And they were very conscientious about wanting to comply and not be close to unmasked people because people who are restaurant goers are not masked. And she had specifically asked that the, at the booth not be put, oh, I'm almost out of time, that not be, be put in front of her shop, but yet it was. And what are the rights of merchants who aren't restaurateurs, who do not want a booth in front of their store? Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Brian, go ahead.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Brian.
Awesome. Yeah, I agree. Having as much help for restaurants, I think is imperative for downtown to thrive. My only issue is that if there is an outdoor, this, this outdoor situation was put together in order to adhere to the purple tier or the red tier. I believe we're still in purple tier. And so it's disheartening to, and I know it's hard for restaurants, I know it's hard for businesses, but you have all these outdoor setups. And the last few weeks, just driving back home and just driving through town, just seeing ins, inside of restaurants packed with no social distance protocol halls, nothing like that. And the outside where there's heat lamps and whatnots are empty. And it's, I don't know if there was a rule change or anything, but I, I don't think there is. But is, is the city going to either step up and talk with the restaurateurs and say, you know, we put this out here for a reason. It's, you know, we're helping you out by letting you have the outdoor location for outdoor eating. And it's, it's not to expand your restaurant to do eating indoors and outdoors. It's merely just to adhere to the purple tier so that everybody's in a safe environment. So we're adhering to the protocols of safety. Retail businesses have to do the 20% or 25% allowed occupancy, you know, taking that down. And so their retail businesses are doing their best to adhere to that. And so it kind of seems like a double standard if restaurants, don't get me wrong, I want them to thrive, I want them to do well. But I also want the proper protocols to be followed because it's the safety of our community at stake. And I don't think that's something that we can falter on. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Caller eight five seven, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Michael.
So this is for the outdoor dining tents, for lack of a better term, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I, we know that things in California, they're, the restrictions go up, they go down, they go up, then they go down. And so I don't, even if the outdoor tents aren't being used, and there's a couple that I've noticed are getting used less and less, I don't want the, the owners to go into a big expense of taking them down, putting them up, vice versa. There was one on the north side of the Bell Tower where there's a, a tent and then a bunch of barrels kicking up in another parking spot. And I never understood why those barrels are there. They, that whole setup there doesn't seem to be used at all lately. So I don't know if you set a deadline where, you know, if it's not used in 30 days, then you have to take it down, something like that. The other public health concern, safety, is a tent up against the, the crosswalk where you really have split seconds to see somebody coming into the crosswalk because it's blocked by solid walls on a tent. That's something the staff really needs to consider. These run on, you know, three, four parking stalls blocking other businesses. I can see the complaints of the business owners. It's like, they don't even know we're here because there's this three or four stall long tent and then another three or four stall tent blocking all of our businesses. They don't even know we're here. So we need to just be friendly about it. If the tents aren't going to be used, how soon can they come down? And the site line for public safety of crosswalks is something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right. Last call for public comment. Okay, Regina.
Yep, no further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not sure where to go with that. That was awkward. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the council for discussion and we'll close public comment. Thank you. So does anybody have any further, based on the information we received in public comment, any, any further discussion?
No, I'll just say, I, I think there was some good comments for staff that I'm, I'm sure took, took note of in terms of, you know, safety issues, other things that, that folks brought up or spaces not being used. I don't think that has to go into a, you know, any motion here, but I do think those were some good comments for, for staff to take back.
Patty.
I was going to say this, oh, well, am I muted?
Oh, you're good.
Okay. I don't, I don't know why this happens, but it pops up on my screen that I'm muted. So anyway, I, I think that we, these issues that have been brought up have been brought up for months now. And we don't seem to be making too much headway. And I know we're just trying to, you know, we realize that it's a situation that a lot of these folks are in. And, but it's disheartening when we allow certain things and there's some rules and they don't kind of follow them. Putting it, you know, and so I'm wondering if we continue this that maybe we could get a little bit more forceful with our enforcement. Because there's other business, businesses to consider.
Thank you, Patty. I, I do have a couple of questions for Pierre based on some of those comments. Do we have a, a stated time? And I, I read through it. I don't recall seeing a stated time. They have to remove it if it's not in use.
We, we did not have in the application process, anything that was specific that if they abandoned the use, that they need to come down. I will add that staff was aware of the barrels that were in, in front of a particular restaurant when there was no dining, basically just to reserve or keep open a parking spot. Those barrels have been removed for several days now, just so everybody's aware. So staff has not been monitoring the usage of the outdoor dining areas. So I did read through Ruth Michelson's comments and she was commenting that some of them aren't being used. There was a discussion amongst staff. And we felt that maybe it was due to the weather. We had some extreme cold weather, extreme wet weather. And I think they, that may have had something to do with it. The weather was nice today, but unfortunately I didn't get downtown to look and see if that was improving our situation with the outdoor dining areas being used. But Tuesday, a lot of the restaurants are closed. So maybe tomorrow's a nice day too, and I'll take a quick gander and see. But I would think that that's certainly direction staff would like to receive from, from the council with something you would like us to take a more firm look at if a particular outdoor dining area is seemingly abandoned or not used for, for a period of time. Staff certainly has the ability per the, for the permit. We can revoke that permit at any time.
All right. And then blocking other businesses, if I understand it correctly, if a, if a restaurant wishes to put their facility in front of another business, that business has to essentially give them permission?
That is correct. That was our original protocol that we required something in writing from the business stating that they were fine with another restaurant adjoining them to consume that parking stall that, that would be in front of their business. The particular businesses in question basically was closed. And I think they only had pickup, so there was extremely limited visitation of that particular store. I'm happy to name it, but you know, I'm, yeah, I don't think there's any reason. I think maybe some of us know which, which business that is. So I think we went ahead and we allowed the restaurant then to move in front of that store because it's by appointment only. There is no walk into that store. It is still currently closed.
All right. And then you, if you want direction, let's see. All right. And then you, if you want direction, let's see, if you want direction from us in terms of the, the taking down, do you have any recommendations? Because I remember there's, there was a two-week period where one individual restaurant didn't, was closed. And they left, I think, two or three parking spaces. I think it's, I can't recall. I don't recall how many spaces. At least two, if not three. And they left their, what I would consider very mediocre system up well, palace that were connected. And that was there for two weeks unused. And you know, that's, that's valuable space. Those parking spaces are worth a lot of money to merchants downtown and, and to the city in terms of sales tax revenue. And everyone that's taken up, it's actually, it has a dollar value to it, just like our previous discussions with parking and that we had with some, with some other stores. They wanted to have more parking per their permit. These, these parking spaces have value and that value is being given to these, literally given to these restaurants, which most people are in favor of, and, but that also should be respected. And so, so how, how is it that we draw that line where, where it is? Do you have any recommendations? I mean, a week of, if they're gonna be, you know, if they're closed for a week and they open up on day seven, is that okay? It's just, it's a game people are gonna play if we do something like that. Michael?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't have a comment.
You kind of wiggled your hand. I was watching you. So, so do you have any recommendations on that?
No, staff would agree with that. In fact, we would appreciate any additional eyes on the streets. It's just difficult. We're very busy. It's just, it's just hard sometimes for us to get out and monitor and really get a sense of, you know, how long these businesses were closed. One business in particular, I know they had a, somebody within their staff had a COVID. And so I think they quarantined themselves. So that was probably 14 days that those particular outside dining areas weren't being used. In another case, we had a structure that wasn't being used because there was a water break and damage inside the restaurant. And so until they got that fixed, they were closed. And then, of course, they weren't operating either and they weren't using their outdoor structure.
That was several weeks.
For several weeks, for quite a while, probably almost a month.
Yeah.
So anyways, I would think that a week is probably fair, that if they're not gonna use it, then they probably should then relinquish the parking stall and allow it be used for parking. So if somebody were to let us know, we can certainly give them a letter and that letter could state that if you're not gonna use it, "We understand you've been closed for so many days. If you're gonna close more than a week, then we're gonna revoke your permit." We can do something like that.
Okay. Anybody like to take a, yes, Patty?
What about the issue about the restaurants that are, I, I'm gonna say abusing the, the purple and red? I've driven by, there's a couple of them and they, the businesses are, as the previous caller said, they're packed inside. And there's nobody outdoors in, you know, their spaces. They've got heat lamps out there. They certainly could be out there. But they're off-street parking, so maybe that's why we're not doing anything about it. But it just doesn't seem fair to me, to the other restaurants, when people say, "Well, let's go down here because we can go indoors," you know. I think everybody just needs to play fair and it doesn't seem to me that it's, that they are. So, and I don't know what kind of enforcement, you know, we have over that.
I guess my only comment on that, Councilmember Barelli, is it's my understanding that those kinds of violations, if you will, are complaint-driven. So if a customer complains that a restaurant is not adhering to the restrictions under the purple tier, they can complain to the county and the county refers it to the state. And I believe it's Caloosa that has been enforcing on some of those rules. ABC was earlier on. I don't think they are now, but they were. But I believe it's Caloosa. And the county does have the ability to revoke their permit because they do permit the restaurant operation. But the city is not enforcing those rules. So there's nothing on our end as far as doing anything other than if we want to be complacent, but we've not been doing so.
Yeah, if I could add to that, please. We, we do not enforce simply because we do not have the staffing to enforce that. However, we do, I will say publicly here, we do encourage the businesses to follow the guidelines. That's what we're required to do and we encourage them to, as close as they can to follow those guidelines. Pierre is correct. If there's a complaint made on a restaurant in particular, not on the other retail businesses because they wouldn't look at that, but the county will. It's my understanding that they will first send a letter to the business and ask them to come into compliance. And then if they have not done that, if the complaint continues, then they would refer them to the state, as Pierre has noted.
And I would say there's at least three restaurants, and I'm aware of El Dorado County, one that's actually in city limits that has lost their health permit.
But they're still open?
Yeah. I mean, outside of, you know.
And they've had huge fines, you know, against them, but they still are open and operating. So I don't know.
Right. I mean, it's buyers beware at that point, right? Because there's no, there's absolutely zero health oversight on it. So they could have, you know, anything going on in the, in the kitchen because they're essentially, it'd be like me opening up a kitchen in my backyard because there's, you know, there's, I just don't have a license to do anything. But that's, that's kind of where we're at, I think, with those. I would, I would call sort of the gross violators at this point.
Any further comments? Anybody want to take a stab at a motion?
I'll go ahead with that. I'll make a motion to adopt staff's recommendations with the addition of seven days. If businesses aren't using it within seven days, to revoke those permits and to not approve the Main Street closures.
I'll second that.
And I, for discussion, I would like you to consider that it be restricted to restaurants only as long as businesses have the ability to, to have at least 25% capacity.
I believe that was in staff's recommendation. That's why I voted to approve staff's recommendation.
And also that they have to remove the structure? Is that part of that?
Yeah, I would think.
You just said revoke the, the permit, but you didn't say remove the, okay.
No, thanks for the clarification. That's a good clarification. Carrie, you're muted.
You're mute, Kara.
With the one-week timeframe, would an exception be made if they have to quarantine for health reasons and are closed for a week? The staff has to quarantine?
I think that's up for discussion, but quarantine's usually two weeks. So we're gonna keep those parking spots closed for two weeks?
Well, it is. It's a significant burden to break down one of those things and put it back up. So if, you know, if it's not being used for no fault, you know, if it's not because the restaurant is ignoring the guidelines and serving people in size because they're following the guidelines and quarantining when they have to, I think an exception should be made.
I'll amend my motion to include the exception.
I would amend my second to include.
All right. All right. So we got a, we got amended first and amended second. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Conville, we have a real call, but please.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa? Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. And we look forward to more restaurants. I wouldn't say more restaurants, but continue their patronage. And I would encourage everybody to come downtown and check out the businesses as well as the restaurants. I think there's quite a few open and, and they're all there, ready to serve. So, and, and they have also done a great job through this last, through this last year in terms of supporting our community through the pandemic, making face masks, providing meals, just doing everything they can. I've seen a lot of outpour from the city, from the, from the merchants on Main Street as well as throughout the town. And so I, I encourage you to, you know, give back what they've been giving and support our community. And, and they have been supported well. I know that. I've heard that from them and it's much appreciated. So thank you very much. Moving on to item 12.2, the direct staff on how to proceed with funding for water reclamation facility and the solar project. Mr. Morse.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item also was on your last agenda, however, was pulled due to lateness of the evening in order to move agenda items along. I'm gonna be fairly quick because this has come before you before. But back in 2017, we completed a study with Johnson Controls that looked at several efficiency measures. One of those, energy efficiency and water efficiency measures. One of those was the, was the lighting and HVAC unit replacement in all of our city buildings. That project is completed. If you recall, we obtained a low-interest loan from the CEC, the California Energy Commission, for those projects, which identified and showed that we would realize savings or at least the funding to pay for those improvements. Some of our HVAC units were badly in need of replacement. So it was a good way to get that, that done. Those projects are completion and, are completed and we're enjoying those. The other project that came to the forefront during that time was the issue of installing a solar field at our wastewater treatment plant to assist in providing some of the energy for our wastewater plant, which is a very high user of energy, as you can imagine. We completed that study. We did a conceptual design of the project in order to get costs and et cetera. And then we proceeded with seeking out funding. We had two or three sources that we went to. In the end, the state revolving loan fund through the Department of Water Resources seemed to be the best avenue for us to pursue. We began that. As we got into it, we were changed to a different division, if you will, in the State Water Resources Control Board. And we're given the opportunity of perhaps receiving loan forgiveness, which would be the equivalent of a grant for a certain portion of our funding that we needed. We proceeded through that process, which took a long time. We had a consultant, Mr. Steve Herrera, who helped us prepare the application for that loan slash grant. We completed that. And in the end, they came back and said that we were eligible under their, what they call their green program for small cities for a 100% loan forgiveness, or principal forgiveness, which basically meant that we would receive a grant for the entire project. We were notified of that, told to, to expect the agreement within the next couple of months. We waited, we waited, and we waited. And it never did come. We asked questions and never did come. In the end, we were then informed that due to various issues last summer, that they were no longer going to be able to offer any amount of principal forgiveness. We had gone from 50 to 75% to 100%. And now they had reneged on that and said, I shouldn't say reneged, but they'd pulled that back and said that they were going, were not going to be able to offer the principal forgiveness. But in exchange, they did offer a 0% interest loan, which is fairly uncommon, I will say, for them to do. It's usually a low-interest loan that they have. But a 0% interest loan was, I think, their way of trying to say that it, it could work. So with that, we began studying that. We, we brought this to council at one point. Council asked us to go back and look at whether or not there was some, any leeway to where we might be able to still get some sort of principal forgiveness. We were not successful with that. And so the decision we need to make now is, do we move forward with the 0% loan? Attached to your staff report is an analysis that we did related to the savings that we would receive. And if you can turn to page six of, six of nine, I believe it is, of that report, that is the document that you can look at to show what those savings will be. And if you look at the next and the last column, you will see what our annual savings will be. And you can see in the early years, they are not that much. In fact, the first year, there were actually a negative of, what is it, $5,000? Or maybe it's less than that. Look at them. No, only $126. Very small amount in that first year. From there, it goes up to 5,000, 11,000, 17,000, increasing every year. Total over the 20 years of the financing is a total of $2.7 million in savings. We've gone back and reviewed this. We've looked at it, obviously with the 100% loan forgiveness, principal forgiveness, we would have been looking even a lot better than this. And that example is also shown on the next page under 0% forgiveness, next couple of pages in your report, in that report. And you can see that, that would have been significantly better, in fact, double in terms of savings over the years. But $2.7 million over the 20 years is still good savings. And our recommendation is that we move forward with this 0% loan. I would like to say that we've looked at this and in talking with the State Water Board and our representative there, it will still take us about nine months to get this paperwork processed. So we're still nine months away from signing an agreement and then being able to move forward with the project. So about a year from now, we hope to be able to move forward with the project in terms of construction. We do, I do want to stress, and we've had this discussion with the, our representative of the state board. If between now and that time when we sign the agreement, say nine months from now, which will be about the end of this calendar year, if something happens that with funding becomes available, and there's a lot of talk about funding both federal and some state, but a lot of federal funding becomes available that we could perhaps lock into in terms of grant funding rather than loans, we would still have that opportunity prior to signing that loan agreement to back out of that and, and look at other funding. So I think that's important that we realize and, and recognize that hopefully that opportunity may come in the next nine months. Even if it does not, my recommendation would be that we write a letter accepting the 0% loan to our representatives. And that include in that letter that if funding becomes available either during this processing time or after that, even within the first 10 years of the loan, if funding becomes available, we would request that they consider putting us back in line to receive some of that and perhaps receive some forgiveness of that loan based on our experience and what we've gone through with them. When I asked the state about that, they weren't real positive about that happening. But I think it is worth us putting that in a, in a formal letter to them so that we can fall back on that, should that become available down the road. So with that, I know Councilmember Saragosa has helped me somewhat with this. And if he has anything more to add, otherwise I will answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I would just, because the council, my colleagues, you gave me also the, the ability to go out and do some fact-finding on my end. And it was slow go at first. I actually have finally received an answer, not an answer, but a, "Okay, we'll look at this" from the governor's office. And so I'm happy about that. I don't know if, you know, that doesn't mean it'll go anywhere. But I do think the course that Cleve has set out in terms of, "Let's move forward", but with the caveat having this letter to say that if something else should open, whether it's through governor's office or through grant funding or through some infrastructure package, that we could still go in a route where it'd be grant dollars or some kind of zero forgiveness. So I'm a little bit more optimistic now that, you know, I did get a response finally. So I know there's plenty of things going on in that world. But, so we'll see where that goes. And I think we proceed along this course. So I just wanted to add that extra little information in for everybody's discussion.
The questions for Cleve. All right. I have to say, I had several questions and you answered every single one of them in your, your comment, in your thorough briefing. So I appreciate your thoroughness and walking us through that process, Cleve. Thank you very much. Mr. Conville, let's go ahead and open this up for public comment.
Public comment is now open for item 12.2. This is the funding for the water reclamation facility, solar project. You will start with Sue Rodman. Go ahead.
Good evening. This is the one I've been waiting for. I think solar is a great way to meet energy needs, especially when we have a high-energy-use facility. Obviously, the 100% forgiveness is the preferred method to fund it. But with the state deficits caused by the current pandemic, I'm not sure that's very likely to happen. A 0% interest loan would also give the city reasonable savings. But I'd like to say if these savings are calculated only on generation costs, if they are calculated on the total electrical cost, they are overestimated between a third and a half. Since the city will still be charged for both distribution and transmission costs, which appear to be within about a third to a half of the total electric cost. Also, maintenance and repair costs for the solar system are not given in the staff report. One factor is the 25-year loan term, which is the average lifespan of a solar field. Solar systems tend to become less efficient as they age, and there's no decrease shown in the savings calculation to account for this drop in efficiency. There's no indication of building reserves for replacement in the savings fixtures, savings figures. Replacement and maintenance costs need to be considered, and so I wonder, are they considered? And have you considered this drop in efficiency? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sue.
Caller 857, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Michael.
So yes, my concern too about the solar farm is the maintenance and replacement costs. You really have to pencil it out and ink it out. These panels degrade almost instantly with dust and pollen. If you're not cleaning the panels constantly with maintenance, their performance drops significantly from day one. The same thing with the replacement. So if their lifetime is 25, and I know you hired a consultant to do all these figures, but they didn't really seem to address the maintenance. I really think, given what we all saw in Texas this last week, we would be better served to have diesel or natural gas generators as our backup. The solar thing is is questionable right now. And whether it pencils out or not, I don't really care. I just want my power on when my power goes out, if you get my drift. This is critical infrastructure. So we need to make sure that it functions every single day of the year. We don't need to have some kind of political alignment for going green. And I just, I feel really uneasy about going solar with this system and the way California's going. That's all.
All right. Thank you.
Brian, go ahead.
Hey, everyone. Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yep, we got you on here. Thank you.
Awesome. I think this is a great idea. I wanted to make a correction. I've been in the solar business for almost 12 years now. Developing utility-grade solar. And utility solar panels are actually much more efficient than rooftop solar because they can handle a higher output and input. So you know, the statement prior that they're, they fall apart or they depreciate right away, that's incorrect. Utility-grade solar panels are unbelievable. Their depreciation usually takes place after about 15 years. And it's actually not the panels that depreciate, it's the inverters that depreciate over time. And so make sure that the the program that you're working through has maintenance on the inverters, you know, dust cleanup and whatnot, that's, you know, standard in the EPC contracts. That's that is all included. It's great because this project will bring a lot more jobs to El Dorado County, which I think is fantastic. Yeah, it's, you guys run a lot of, there's a lot of power consumption that happens over at the waste management plant. And I think having a solar aspect to that is, that's only going to benefit the city, you know, and it's only going to be positive. But I will add. Yeah, it's, it really also depends on the type of solar panel that you get. I've seen really good solar panels come out of California. I've seen really good ones come out of Italy. And with less costs on trade with energy products, I believe that the prices are going to be a lot lower. Manufacturing is going to go way up. And I think this is a great project. This is awesome. I really congratulate you guys on going this direction. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Brian.
I see no other public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Connell. All right, let's bring back any further comments. I do know that there, we have the, there were some misstatements in there, some clarifications need to be made. I'll go ahead and let you go, I'll go with those, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to go back and remind you of a couple of things. And I didn't go back to the beginning of this project and go through everything that we studied and looked at. Number one, I want to remind you that we hired an independent consultant to review this project and make sure that what we were, a solar expert, that what we were getting in terms of savings and the purchase of the equipment, et cetera, made sense and would realize the cost savings. So yes, we did have that reviewed and looked at. Number two, in terms of maintenance, yes, maintenance is included in the estimates of cost going forward, including the inverter replacements that were referred to by Brian Chase, including cleaning of the panels and et cetera. All of that is included. In terms of the savings only being on generation, what we did is the bill, the, the consultant looked at the total bill, but they looked at the savings that would come from generation, applied, applied that to the total bill. And so that still is legitimate, and that's where those cost savings will be realized. The savings from the energy that we generate from those solar panels will be directly applied to the total bill, and that's the savings that you see that will be generated there within that, in the sheet that's shown there. Regarding backup power, I want to, I want to stress that this does not solve that problem. These will not keep us going during a blackout. This generation is designed, in order to do that, you would have to have battery backup with your solar. We do not have that. That's not part of what we have currently. We've looked at that a little bit, and maybe in the future, that is something that we consider further. But we do not have that. But we do have generators. So when our power goes out, we have, in fact, we did some, installed some new work, did some work to ensure that those were operating properly, and they are operating well now. So I think, again, I want to go back, that maintenance cost is completely within there. We are good out through the, over the time, the life of these to, to take care of that. So again, oh, the final thing I want to mention is this contract with Johnson Controls is a guaranteed contract. They monitor the savings to show that they are realized over what our bill is. If those are not realized in any given year, our contract requires them to pay the difference. So this is a guaranteed contract we have, and that's the other thing that we have going forward to make sure that these savings are realized, and it's in their best interest to make sure that those numbers are good also. So with that, if I missed anything, Council, let me know. I can try and answer those questions.
Any further questions for Cleve? All right, can we get a motion? Yes, Karen. If you're, yeah, thanks.
I'm moving that we approve authorized staff to proceed with the 0% interest loan for the project.
All right. And Patty raised her hand and said second, but she was still on mute, so we'll take it. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mayor, if I could, before you make that, and maybe I can just do this, but I'd like to include if you'll authorize that letter to be signed by the mayor regarding our plans going forward that I addressed, I would appreciate that.
I'll modify the motion to include that letter.
Modify my second.
You, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Barelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Nell.
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa. Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Thomas.
Hi, thank you. All right, and moving on, provide direction, yeah, provide, provide direction to staff on how to proceed with the market lights across Main Street. And this is to Miss Lee.
Good morning. Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor. This item for you is similar to one that was reviewed last February as well, and what a difference a year it makes for perspective. As you know, in both 2019 and 2020 holiday season, the city spearheaded the effort with significant merchant and community support from local businesses to string market lights across Main Street. And in 2020, it was even managed to be expanded down to the intersection of Cedar Ravine Road around the Druid Monument. As it was discussed in February last year, this item is before you to provide direction to staff on how to proceed with the market lights on Main Street. Since that time, we've all had to adjust our lives to a COVID-modified world, which includes bringing businesses and dining outdoors along Main Street. The city has received an assortment of comments from the public merchants on Main Street, some in favor of leaving the lights up and some in favor of taking them down. Some considerations for moving the lights include keeping the street vertically clear as well as extending the service life of the existing market lights strands and their bulbs. Some considerations for leaving the lights in place include the service life of the lights would be reduced, but the fact that they're tied to the photocells on the streetlights does help with that is they're not on continuously. The lights and the strands will also require maintenance throughout the year, but the contractor has agreed to do that as part of his existing contract in lieu of removing the lights. Leaving the lights in place may also spur on a desire to go bigger and brighter next holiday season. With all of that being said, there are some human considerations to make as well. Those considerations are related to the ambiance the market lights give to Main Street, particularly where outdoor dining has been forced as a requirement amidst our current COVID restrictions. The lights do provide a welcoming glow, and I actually had an opportunity to recently visit downtown Auburn where they too have strung market lights across Lincoln Way and throughout their historic district as well. So this has become a very subtle way other communities are also inviting people to support their downtown merchants in these challenging times. So with that, staff is requesting direction on how Council would like to best proceed with the existing Main Street market lights. And that concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, any questions? Yes. Vice Mayor Taylor.
So last year, I supported taking the lights down because I had kind of this nightmare scenario in my mind of a truck going underneath them and pulling like hundreds of feet of lights down with glass light bulbs just, you know, exploding around people. But when we were talking about this, it sounds like that's not really a likely or possible scenario, right?
So that's correct. So actually, the lowest clearance we have is still six inches above the legal vertical clearance requirement, which is actually even further higher than the legally allowed vehicle height. So, and then the other thing too is they're actually not glass bulbs, they're plastic, if that helps. And then the D-rings would actually give out a little faster than anything else. So I feel fairly confident. I think we were conservative last year with it and, you know, cautiously so. It's been a while since we've done, you know, such a, an effort. And also, it was our first year. But, you know, every single time that we do these and every time that we get involved with putting these lights up, we get a little wiser in our ways of doing them too. So.
And then one more question. So the, we paid a certain amount at the beginning of the holiday season, and that was going to include putting them up and also taking them down.
Yes.
But if we don't take them down, then the maintenance for those lines would be fully taken care of?
Yep.
So replace bulbs and anything like that for the next holiday season?
Yep.
And then we would have all that money to go bigger. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I love Christmas. What do you want to do here?
I love Christmas too, but we can, we can, we can cross that bridge, you know, in the fall.
Yes, Patty.
Well, I hate to throw cold water on this Christmas season, but I, that's really what I want to say is those lights are for Christmas. And I think that if we leave them up the whole entire year, that it's going to really, really diminish the wow factor and the, you know, the holiday season. I, I've been thinking a lot about it, and I'm thinking that yes, the lights are inviting, but I think that each individual building, the business owners can, it, lights don't cost too much. They could string up their own lights and, you know, really kind of like we do pink in the night when you go down there and every building, you know, has made an effort to put up the pink lights. And I, I think the same, excuse me, could be done for other months. And, you know, and I'm thinking too of the cost of, of leaving them up and wearing them out. And we can't stop that. So that's just my opinion that I, I really, I just think we should reserve it for the, the holiday season. I'm not against, I think, didn't we, what was the date that we set? Putting them up and taking them down. Didn't we extend it like into February or, I, I can't remember, but I know, you know, we went a little bit longer.
Yeah, so we did go a little bit longer, although not intentionally. I think it was more of a scheduling, but we actually took them down at the very end of February, about actually this time last February. And then, you know, everything happened about four weeks later related to COVID. But then we were in that weird sticky place where nothing was open. So, and then, you know, as we've kind of, you know, leaned into the discomfort of trying to figure out what businesses could be open and what kind of outdoor dining we could provide. You know, Directory Russ did a great job of presenting the, the temporary use permit and outdoor dining item a few moments ago. And so you know, that was something that we thought, you know, might just be a good idea. I mean, otherwise, we probably would have just made the guess, maybe we should just take them down. And much to the comments even with Council, we've received about 50/50 on people that want to either have them up or take them down. So, you know, which is, we got to a place where we thought, you know, let's just ask the question. So.
Honestly, I do get it. You know, they are, they're, they're really, you know, but I just, I, I just think they should have their own time. And again, like I say, I think the business owners do a great job with pink in the night, and I think they could do the very same thing, you know, with other, they could, you know, they could use different colors of lights. They could decide it amongst themselves, so, you know. I don't know. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, thank you, Patty. Yes.
I'm kind of in the camp of saving the life of those and saving money. But I am wondering if we could maybe extend the time to be fit with daylight savings. So take them down when daylight savings is extended and put them back up when daylight savings, when we roll back. Will still be November coming into the holiday season, but, you know, I don't, I also don't see the point in having them up through the summer when it's light till nine and 9:30 and
Right.
Kind of my thoughts on it.
That's a good comment. Yeah, thank you.
I was, thank you, Councilmember. And I was going to say the same thing. I was going to say at least, maybe, you know, we, we've extended the time for outdoor dining through, what was it, May, into May? So if we had this run to the same time, you know, at least that would, assuming that we don't need to have outdoor dining anymore, but at the very least, you'd have it through then. And by then, we're well into daylight savings or whatever the timeframe is. And it's, yeah, it's nine o'clock, it's still light, seems to be less need for it. But if we release ran through the time we were, we've extended outdoor dining, I think there's some correlation there as well.
So just as a reference, daylight savings time is on March 14th this year.
It's not that much longer. So that's why I thought if we at least went through the time we've allowed for the outdoor dining, there could be some
Long that time is going to last.
Yeah.
Yes. And I was just looking at a graph of the, the swing in times of when the sun sets. And it's, you know, for, for a significant portion of all the way from mid-April to, to about the mid-September, it's, it's, what is it? The sun sets, it gets dark at a The sun sets, it gets dark at about eight nineteen or eight fifty-two, depending on how you do your numbers, and that just doesn't, you know, after that, it's, you know, people aren't around town to enjoy the lights much, so. So, any further questions? I will go ahead and open up the public comment. All right, see you then. Mr. Connell.
Public comment is now open for item 12.3, the market lights over Main Street.
I'm sorry, I did see a couple of hands up before you closed public comment. I'm sorry.
Oh, we didn't close it, we just opened it.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. We'll start with Sue Rodman. Go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. I think the market lights add visibility while the sidewalk dining continues. And I agree with Councilmember Sarah Gosha that by May 31st, it's daylight long enough that they are no longer needed, so I would take them down for the summer. So let them go as long as we have the sidewalk dining, then they help provide that atmosphere and invite people in. But by the time you get to the end of May, you don't need them, and you're not even gonna notice that they're on anymore. And probably, if they're on the photocell, they won't be on. So I think that leave them up while we have the sidewalk dining, and then by May 31st, take them down for the summer and then put them up like he was suggesting in November when we go back to daylight slaving time or back to real time. Thank you.
Caller 857, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hello, Michael.
Hey, so I'm willing to change my mind because I had said, I appreciate the wow factor, they should come down, and then we all get wowed towards Christmas. I'm willing to change my mind because I want to think about ultimate costs of taking them down, putting them back up. I mean, if it costs $2,500 a pop to put, take them down, put them up versus the cost of them drying out during a hot summer, and what the cost of a string of LED lights costs, that's the kind of analysis I'd like to see. I'm assuming these are all LED lights, they cost pennies to run versus incandescent. I do have concern about something getting caught, you know, through a, a large load coming through the road. If we want to invest in something that can elevate them even higher, that might be a consideration. So, and the wow factor, if they're all white and they're up all the time, maybe the wow factor is during Christmas, we add green and red to those cables that are strung across the road. But true consideration needs to be made for the tearaway factor, right? So a big rig, something happens, comes down, it's not gonna pull down the entire network. It's just gonna break away a small section, they'll realize what happened, they'll come to a stop. So there's some design considerations that need to take place, and maybe a small investment to move those lines up a little bit higher. But I'm willing to go with the, the white, the extra illumination for crosswalks is amazing during the winter months. I have to admit it. Post-Christmas, it's amazing. It very, it helped a great bit. So some things to consider there. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Ruth Michelson, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the bottom of page one of the staff report where it says the strands of lights are powered by outlets located at the top of the lamp posts, and they receive power based on photocell activation at each of the lamps. So there's an outlet. How about unplugging them? That would be easier than taking them down and putting them up. I like them. I, I really do like the lights, and I, and I do hear what City Councilmember Patty Barelli says about it takes away from the wow. But I think as Michael Dobridge just said, we can always add on more. I know one year we added blue. I happen to like that. It was to, to memorialize a fallen police officer, but we could always add more lights to it. And again, I think about, back, back when the Placerville, when the PDA had, did the Christmas lights, and I, I was on the committee back, the tree lighting committee and all that that involved. I happen to know we spent $6,000 when that cherry picker type crane thing came in and wrapped poles and all the various things they did downtown. It was, it was a chump change. It was a lot of money. And I, you know, in reading the staff report, it sounds like you've been able to manage to get some volunteer groups to help out with this, so that's wonderful. It was very expensive. But I also think of the wear and tear of taking down and putting up, and like Michael said, I mean, you also have to think about the hot summers and how they get baked in the sun, but it's, it, it's damaging too, and especially you have this tense wire going across, and that's not an easy thing to, I wouldn't think to construct. So it just seems to me, leave them up. If you get tired of looking at them, can you just not unplug them? And they can be there, but you wouldn't see them, but they would be there if you don't want them on around the year. And the last thing I wanted to say in my final bit of time is not getting a credit for them not taking them down, I thought was problematic. And they claimed it was a trade-off for doing the maintenance. And I'm gonna really, really question that. There's a heck of a lot more work to take things down than to do whatever they're doing to maintain them, which I have to be honest, I, I really can't imagine what, they're gonna look at them, but are they dusting them? Or, or every once in a while changing a bulb? I, I just can't imagine that for LED lights, there's much of any maintenance. So I, I think I would insist on getting some of that money back since they didn't take them down. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with Mike Drobish and with Ruth Michelson a lot. These, I believe, are the strands that PDA donated to the city at one of the for the Festival of Lights, which is so glad that the city has taken that on because it's wonderful. The, I agree, the taking down of the lights and then also having to store the lights is really expensive. And that was one of the big hiccups that the PDA was running into is putting them up is one thing, but then taking them down, then storing them, and then doing the maintenance on them, and then putting them up the following year and finding out, oh man, this whole strand isn't lit, I gotta go out and buy another strand. That is, just trying to get the, the paperwork on how that pencils out is a nightmare. And so that was one of the things that the PDA ran into a lot is that it was no longer a, a sustainable program for the PDA, and so we were able to, the city gladly accepted and took that over, but I, as a, as like, almost like a, to err on the side of caution, it is, it's awful to have to figure out the money situation for just taking down lights when they look so good. And Mike's right, you know, providing the illumination for the crosswalks has been great. It really shows downtown Placerville as much more inviting, seeing those lights across the top. I think it also presents almost like a, a feeling of just like that home away from home. It's like, it's a very welcoming, very warm, very, very nice feeling when you walk down on Main Street, even if it's for a late night stroll, you know, it's well-lit, so you don't feel like you're in the back streets of New York and you're gonna get mugged or anything, but it's very nice. And I, I would say, you know, keep them up, you know, if there's maintenance to be done on them, do maintenance on them while they're there. But yeah, it's just the, the cost associated with taking them down and then storing them and then putting them back up when all of that can be alleviated by just keeping them up. Thanks so much.
All right, John Clarici, go ahead.
Okay, I agree with Patty. I think that I had a nice discussion with the, the mayor about this the other day, and I think that there is something about when they come back on in the fall, especially as the days are getting shorter, that there's just something really wonderful about those lights all of a sudden being there again. We can go round and round about what it take them, put them up and how much it costs and all of that. There is an algorithm that would help. To just, to think that that would be a time to, as Dennis, I think, the number pointed out. By the time, you know, the end of March, mid-March, beginning of March, the days are already be long. I, and as you said, during the, June 26th is, you know, the solstice. Do it during the day. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
For the public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Some clarification on who paid for the lights. I believe that Brian Veerkamp, through the Board of Supervisors, while he was a supervisor, donated X number of dollars, and I believe, I can't believe, I can't, I don't recall if it was five or $6,000 that the PDA forwarded to the, the city to, for the lights that the, the Brian, for decorations downtown that Brian had, that was requested from and Brian provided to PDA for that purpose. So, so ultimately, that money came from the chamber, not from the chamber, but the Board of Supervisors and specifically Brian's, Brian's office. It was discretionary funds that he could provide, which we greatly appreciated that the, that the county would help participate in supporting it, for which, you know, this, this particular event in Christmas is really for not just the city of Placerville, for their entire community. People come out and they really enjoy it. And, and he understood that, and that was a big part of that. And really, the, 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 I was in the camp of let's keep them up all year because they're really cool, and I talked to a lot of people, and they, and they said that, and I agree with that. But when you start looking at the, the daylight and daylight savings and all these things going, it is just, it just doesn't make sense to keep them up, to have them be in the, to have them have the ultraviolet attack on the plastics and all that stuff. It just, it'll wear them out much quicker. I like the look of it, but when, when it's, when the daylight is until, you know, almost ten o'clock at some one point in the year, it just doesn't make sense to have them up. And I, and I, and I, I agree with both sides. I like them, and I think I like the wow factor too, so. I, I'm, I'm in the camp of, and I looked at this kind of taking them down about early March and, and have them up, maybe just before Halloween at the end of October. I think that'd be nice to have up when we, if, and when we have people downtown and celebrating Halloween, it'd be nice to have them up at that point. That, that's my thought on it, and, and I, I think we can go through a lot of machinations of, of the cost of taking up, putting them down versus maintaining them and the time it takes to replace some of the monies and everything. I just think that, you know, I think it looks good to, to, to take them down and put them back up. Patty.
You know, you're talking about the folks that have, that did donate. I know Rebecca's got a list and she can tell us, you know, who and what. But, you know, that's another thing to consider, that these folks, I think, are donating for our Christmas season. And, you know, how often are they gonna kind of, you know, gonna come forward if this, if, if, if leaving them up causes them to deteriorate so fast, you know? I think if I were somebody that were, you know, giving money, I would think twice about, well, you guys are just, you know, you don't need to do this, and you know, I don't know. I think we ought to consider that too, so. Rebecca, maybe you can share with us who did it. I'm not that it matters, but it's still, we had quite a bit of money donated to us to do this project.
We did, actually, in kind of supporting what Mayor Thomas said about the funding that came through the PDA, but actually originally from Supervisor Brian Veerkamp's office. We also had one of our commenters, our public commenters donate too. John Clarici actually gave us some money for the lights, and we had a lot of folks here locally too. We had Robinson's Pharmacy donate for us. We had CNH Auto donated. We had Notn Enterprise donate, so we actually had a lot of folks involved. We also had Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering donate, and they donated money and time and materials for traffic control and a lot of efforts. I will say that they were probably one of the larger donators, and in discussions with them, they love the lights up, and they actually said, eh, just let it stay up, it looks good. So, you know, and that actually included that blue strand of light was actually Matt Veerkamp's idea when Ishmael was murdered. So it was, it's, we, we leave that light up for our law enforcement as they are the heart of our community too. So law enforcement, fire. But wanted to just kind of put that out there, that there is a lot of folks in this, but it doesn't appear that it would bother them if we wanted to keep it up. I think that they're kind of deferring to us, but there's definitely been some great points of both arguments here, and so I, I'm, I'm grateful for this discussion.
So would you tell us again how, how, the length that decreases because of, due to leaving them up?
Um, I mean, it kind of varies, you know, because sometimes you can get some really good lights and sometimes not so much. I mean, just from my own personal experience with market lights in my backyard, you know, they have been pretty sturdy for me, so, you know, some folks say two to three years, and some folks can get quite a few more years out of their market lights, so.
So it's just the lights that deteriorate, nothing, nothing else?
Yeah, for the most part, yeah. And then, you know, you, you could unplug them if you wanted to, but then, kind of speaking to Mayor Thomas's point too, they, they do deteriorate from being out in the elements, and so there's not a huge benefit in doing that way. But I mean, it's just, you know, how, however we want to do this. I do think that there is some validity to saying, you know, the daylight savings time and having sunset come later and later. And I mean, Main Street's a ghost town at like eight thirty, so.
Yeah, it's only active on weekends, you know.
Kara, yes.
You're muted.
Is that a motion?
Lots of really great comments, and, and I, I also agree with all of them, and, you know, when this came up before, I, I opted to keep them special for Christmas time. However, this year is different, and I feel like if there is any year to experiment with it, it would be this year, and I like the idea this year of saving the $8,400 that it costs to put them back up. And, you know, in terms of business dying down after eight o'clock, that's true, but there is bars open, and it might help kind of stimulate a nightlife in Placerville, which wouldn't be a terrible thing. So I'm, I think I'm leaning towards actually keeping them open this year, reevaluating next year, and, and then probably going back to keeping them just as a seasonal thing. But, you know, I'm, 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 I'm pretty open. I also like the idea of having to go from the spring till October.
I'm down.
Go down, yeah. Back in October before Halloween.
That was helpful. So, so you want them, but you don't want them?
Yeah.
But I think I, it sounds like I'm in the minority on that unless anyone's
So is this just for this year, or are we setting?
I'm thinking this year and then bring it back. It would be, it's kind of interesting to see how it does in the summer.
Councilmember Nell.
I know what I said before, but I'm actually kind of leaning to what Kara's saying now, in, in terms of trying it for this year. You know, some of the compact comments that impacted me were, you know, hey, those lights are helping us see people in the crosswalks, it's making it more pedestrian friendly, which is making me kind of think, well, maybe we should just try it for this year and, and see if we think it really makes a significant difference or not. I don't know, that's, I, like I said, I hear, I understand everything, but that's kind of what I was thinking as I was listening to all the comments.
Yes, Councilmember Sarah Gosha.
Just a clarification. Rebecca, can you go over the cost again? I just kind of want to hear the if we do or if we don't thing, or is there a difference?
So the first year, we paid, I believe, out the door was around 15 grand, and that was 10 grand for purchasing the lights and stringing them up for the first time from Sacramento Street to Bed stringing them up for the first time from Sacramento Street to Bedford on Main Street. Now, that actually included, you know, these are specially measured cables and they, they, I mean, they're exact lengths, because they vary from pole to pole throughout Main Street. We did have the D-rings and the anchors donated. They were fabricated for us by Veer Camp, and so when that was put in place, they actually went and did the cable ties directly to those. So, each strand is actually organized, catalogued, numbered, and stored. So, it is quite an effort to put them away and store them and stuff, too. However, the, out of the 10,000, about 5,000 of that was the purchase of the lights, the actual lights themselves. And then this year, we did 8,400, but that included, again, the purchase of the actual lights themselves, as well as the special stringing from segment to segment, and it included maintenance on the Christmas tree lights, which we did have to have some maintenance on the Christmas tree lights. We did have some branches that broke last March. And so, you know, that's just going to be, continuing to be a fight that we fight for that tree. So, but that's kind of where some of the costs came from. Does, did that answer your question?
It does. I mean, because my only, I guess what I'm, what I was going towards then was there's always going to be the cost of taking down, taking, putting them up, but these are actually specially designed in the sense that their lengths are custom to our poles. So, I would assume the more they're, they stay up throughout the whole year, the, the more they're going to deteriorate, and then we would have to buy, make that purchase again on the actual lines of them. So, I guess that would be my concern of leaving them up would be the deterioration of those lines and the bulbs quicker than if we took them down, because we're still going to have, we'll end up having to, I don't know, maybe it evens out that you don't have to pay for the, the setup and, and pull down, but 10,000 was, I mean, that's fairly expensive, and then the, the cost of the bulbs as well. So, I, I mean, with that, it makes me still lean towards leaving them up as long as we can, but taking them down.
All right. Does anybody have a motion? I will, okay, I will move that we take them down mid-April and put them up late October.
I will second that.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Can we get a roll call, please, council call?
Councilmember Barelli?
Hi.
Councilmember No?
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Hi.
Mayor Thomas?
Hi. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mayor.
That was our most difficult conversation yet this evening. Thank you, Rebecca. All right. Scratch that one off. Moving on. Adopt a resolution, amending Resolution Number 7964 regarding membership of the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee for the City of Placerville. And this one is Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item was requested to be brought back for consideration. There's, the, the current makeup of the, that is defined by the resolution states that the membership will be for a member of the Placerville Downtown Association, a member of the Placerville Drive Business Association, and the Broadway Businesses, actually, it's called Broadway Village Business Association. As you know, the Broadway Villages Business Association and the Placerville Drive Business Associations aren't, are no longer operating at this time. Those associations do not exist. When this was established, I believe they were up and, up and working, and, and we did consult them on their membership. However, because of that, we felt we should bring this back, and there also have been some changes in the membership of the Placerville Downtown Association, although it is open to the entire, my understanding, to the entire downtown area. As we reviewed this, as I reviewed it and talked to some of my staff about it, we felt that opening this up to those entire business districts, regardless of association membership, was more appropriate in order to allow anyone within those to be represented and to be on the committee and, and provide input. So, we, we changed the resolution, or recommend changing the resolution, to change instead of the Placerville Downtown Association, Placerville Drive Business Association, and Broadway Business Association, we changed the word association to area, and then we put in language to define those specific areas. And so, that's what you have in the, the resolution that is before you for consideration tonight. And that would open it up regardless of whether the, not the associations exist. That entire area that is pretty much recognized by those business associations would, would be eligible to be members of the Economic Advisory Committee. There was some question that has been raised, and I'm open for discussion or recommendations on that regarding areas like the Placerville Downtown area. Should it include some of the side streets such as Pacific and Sacramento Streets, that little area in there? There's also Chapel Street that is just off Pacific Street, that potentially, there's some retail in that area. Also, was mentioned Cedar Ravine has some offices, not really retail, but some offices that are located within the first little bit up Cedar Ravine off of Main Street. You also have Locust Street that has some businesses between Main Street and Highway 50 that potentially could be considered. They, they are not included on this list at this time, but I am open to those being included if the council feels it, and, and is important, and we can simply amend that language to allow those areas to be in the, in, within that zone. So, with that, I will answer any questions you have, and turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. And any questions for Cleve? Yes, Michael?
Not really a question, just, just wanted to make a comment. I think I was the one that had asked for this to come back, and I just want to thank Cleve, because I wasn't even aware that the other two were defunct, for lack of a better term, the other two associations. So, I think this is a much cleaner way of doing it. It opens it up for, I mean, for whatever reason, if someone doesn't want to belong to an association, it still gives them the opportunity to serve their community and, and talk about the interest of all, all the businesses in that area. So, I like the expansion of it, and whether we go into some of these other streets or not, but I just think this is a cleaner way, and it's, it's a broader way to bring in more community members.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further comments at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for a public comment.
Public comment is now open for Item 12.4. This is regarding the membership of the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee, and we will start with Brian. Go ahead.
Hey, everyone. Brian, President of the Placerville Downtown Association. I wanted to make a comment. When I noticed in the resolution that, that you wrote, Cleve, it said that PDA had a change in the way that it gets its membership. I want to clarify for the City Council that the membership really hasn't changed. It's that we were not compliant with federal IRS Codes 501(c)(6) in defining our membership. And so, as a merchant organization, we had to divine, I'm sorry, define our membership as those that were merchants. And so, while every merchant on Main Street can be a member of the PDA, it is 100% voluntary on their part. And so, we still do reckon, we still recognize and represent all merchants within the Central Business District upon their voluntary application, fill out, and sent back to us with their member dues. And so, the membership prior to, a few years ago, was everybody, regardless whether or not you wanted to be or not, was considered a member of the PDA, which was in direct violation of a federal IRS code of defining membership. And so, in order to become, like I said before, to become more compliant, the PDA worked along with the IRS to become compliant within defining our membership. And so, I believe that statement in the resolution saying that we've changed the way that our membership operates is, it's not clear, because we still are the association for the Central Business District that represents merchants that are defined as retail or restaurants that collect sales tax, pretty much. And so, I want that to be on the record as well. And when we had a, an individual that was brought as a recommendation from the PDA, that is a building owner and a, a member of the PDA to serve, they filled out their application and all the requirements as was requested by the City Council in the previous meeting, and they met all the requirements. And so, to put together this resolution, I think it, it does a disservice to people wanting to get involved with city politics and with their city government, in that you've set a standard for filling out an application, following all the protocols necessary, and then totally not even following your own rules and setting up new rules. So, I'd like you to take a look at that, and also, if you can change on your resolution, what's the definition of membership according to the PDA and to the IRS? That'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Call 857. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Michael.
Thank you. Hey, so I hadn't even thought about what Mr. Chase just said, but yes, so if they are coming into compliance with federal regulations, I think there's no reason that your resolution or ordinance, whatever it is, should disparage them in any way. We should applaud anyone for coming into compliance with the law. So.
All right. Thank you.
No.
That was my fault. I'm sorry. Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
Good evening, Kathy.
I was interested to see, it was in 2012 when the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee was formed, and I applied as a citizen but didn't get chosen. And then I remember they had a meeting, and, and they meet on Fridays at noon. That is not a good time for anybody to attend a meeting except the members of that committee. And we have staff members who might be off on that Friday, but they have to go to that meeting. I think those meetings should be held more when it's more convenient for more people to attend. Fridays are really bad at noon to attend those meetings. And I think that I'm not really sure what has been accomplished by the committee. It's like it's, I get their agendas, I get their reports. I'm not really sure what they have done for the city in economic development, and I hope that there's some kind of a report that I can read, but, but I think that there needs to be the at-large members reciting in the city limits of Placerville. I think it needs to be people that don't own a business. I think it should be just city residents. Anyway, I won't be applying this time, because I'm retired, but now I've lost my... Are you there? You can cut me off. I.
We're here. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Kathy.
Thank you.
You bet. Have a good evening.
Ruth Michelson, go ahead.
Thank you. Just to tag on to what Kathy was saying about not being sure what the Economic Advisory Commission does, I was looking into that myself, and unfortunately, unless it's been corrected in the last couple of days, the minutes from the meetings, there were six meetings in the last calendar year. Six of them were canceled, six of them were held, but none of the minutes are posted on the website. I think the last set of minutes are at least a year old, so it'd be nice to get that updated. I know minutes were taken. I don't know what the, what the mechanism is for getting them posted, but I, I did talk to someone on, on, anyway, I know there were minutes. They just haven't been posted. And, and I, you know, I wrote a letter. I don't really, I'm not, certainly not going to read it. It's lengthy, but I'm concerned on the, your ability to change midstream of a recruitment period. The ability to change rules midstream. The deadline was February 12th, last Friday, 5:00 p.m. People followed the rules. People applied. Those people should be able to be interviewed. You're already running behind. These positions are supposed to be starting on March 1st. You're woefully behind. Well, that might be 12.5. I'll hold off for 12.5, but I asked that council be asked, maybe it's not a legal question, maybe it's an ethical question, but you have a process. If you want to have this resolution, as I said in my letter, whatever, fine. I mean, I, I do think it gives short shrift of PDA, but if you're getting rid of associations, but do it for the next recruitment. How can you do this mid-recruitment? It just doesn't. I, I, I am, I just shake my head, shake my head that you think you could change things midstream. Finish what you've done. Take the applicants that you have, and and consider, and, yes, I know you're, and it comes up in your next issue about that you, in 12.5, that you're short a couple of applicants, but you've operated these commissions without full, full numbers of people, and that shouldn't be stopping you from moving ahead in this process. So, I guess that's what I have to say. There were some other issues I had put in my letter that I'll help you, help you look at as well, but they're not really pertinent to this, this 12.4. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruth.
Mr. Mayor, I cut off. 857, so, go ahead, 857.
Hello, Michael. Sorry, we cut you off there. We thought you were done.
Yeah, so I got cut off mid-thought. I hope that's not a violation of my civil rights, but it really pissed me off.
But you know what? We all make mistakes sometimes, so you, we added you back in here, so let's hear what you have to say, Michael. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so you are up against a city code deadline of March 1st, at least for the planning commission, for sure. You have to seat new planning commissioners by March 1st. If you don't do it, and you don't have a quorum, they cannot take action. I've been through this. So, get off the ball and interview. Anyway, for this item, if you just make it for business owners in the city, that would be great. Business interests, don't define it so minutely that you can't get people to apply. Right? You're, you're making it PDA. You're making it all these business districts. Just say, a business owner, regardless of residency, is part of the PD, of the economic people that, huh, anyway, I won't even say how sorry they've been. They were put together to save us from the economic collapse of what, 2008? Whatever they've done.
All right. Thank you very much.
John Clarici, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members at all. I like the resolution, the way you've revised it, casting a broad net in the three districts. I, I want to, I don't want to say I want to disagree with Michael, because we rarely, we actually agree on a lot of things. I do think that there is some validity to having the three kind of food group districts, business districts in town, Main Street, Broadway, Placerville Drive. I think trying to get some representation from each one of those districts specifically is a good thing. I was on the peak. I think I was actually at its founding. And, and I was on it for several years. We did some, we, originally, we did, I think we did some useful work. We put together a, a, a plan, and did some other things. We used to do those interviews where we would go interview new businesses to see what, what the experience was like to open a business in town, you know? How did it go at City Hall? Were there things that were challenges? Were there things that were positives, negatives, you know, sort of a plus delta thing? It also sort of helped, you know, kind of like, almost like a welcome wagon for some folks. I, I actually did a couple of those. They, they were very intriguing, and, and we also talked to a staff, if I recall, Cleve, you can correct me on this. We also, I think, were at the time going around talking to established businesses to see, you know, once again, that the temperature of things, find out whether, you know, the kind of the business. Whether, uh, you know, the kind of the business climate in town, once again, plus delta, were there. Good things that were happening in town in in terms of city government and whatnot, and were there negatives that need to be addressed? Those things can all still be happening and, uh, you know, maybe it's time for the city council to take a real hard look at the peak and, um. And, you know, think about its mission, how it can be more useful. Um, this, the Friday, the Friday meetings were a challenge. There's absolutely no doubt about it, but, you know, it's hard to get people to come. Uh, later in the day. I mean, you can move them to the later afternoon, perhaps. Um, I'm not sure what you can do about that. Plus, you know, there's only so many times you can ask staff to stay late at night. At least that's my personal opinion, so. Um, I like the changes, though, casting a broad net. Um, irrespective of what the PDA has done to perfect their membership, that that's their business, their, their private outfit, they can do what they want. Um, I think having it open to anybody that has a business in the central business district, irrespective of their membership of any kind. Um, is actually valuable. Uh, so anyway, uh, and certainly helps maybe with recruitment. So anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Clarici.
I see no further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cal. And we'll bring it back. I, um. Uh, I think, uh, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to clarify one thing. The issue regarding the membership of PDA. Is not actually in the resolution. It is only in my staff report, so that is not. Um, and and the statement that is made is that, um. That they have changed membership requirements and membership has been reduced in the recent past. If that's incorrect, I apologize for that, but it's my understanding there were some different requirements, not not required, but different things they had to do. In order to be a member. And if I'm wrong on that, that's what I was told. Um, by those who had gone through the process and and so that's what I used for that. So anyway, just wanted to clarify that item. But it is not in the resolution, anything regarding that, so.
Thank you, Cleve. Vice Mayor Taylor.
And just one more clarification to making this change does not affect any applicants. It's not disqualifying anyone that's already applied. Um, and I, I think that, I mean, looking at this report, it seems like this change. Probably should have happened a while ago, seeing as all of the districts, um, associations are defunct. So I think that, um. I think that this is a good change and it clarifies things.
Yes, Patty.
Um, I'd like to, um, how are you going to define an, an area? Are you going to draw boundary lines or is it going to be streets or you, it just, it's kind of.
The resolution defines it in streets. Um, and that's kind of, I think, what Cleve was going for. Uh, was streets and if we, if we feel the need to add a street to it, to, you know, make it more complete, we can certainly do that.
So that's what, uh, what you were just talking about, like, Cedar Ravine, is that, okay?
Yes. All right, uh, council member, no.
Yeah, I, I like. Resolution because it's inclusive and I I think that's what we really should be moving towards is not to exclude anybody, but to include everybody, so. I really like this resolution. I'm okay if you want to extend the streets. Um, everybody in those businesses should have an opportunity and and I agree with Kara, we should have done this a long time ago, so this just seems like a housekeeping issue.
All right.
I'll, I'll move the motion.
Second.
All right. Do we get a, a further discussion? No additional streets. We're good with the way it is. All right, let's, uh, get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Barelli.
Hi.
Councilmember No.
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
Mayor, can I just make one more comment?
Please.
Um, you know, in regards to the streets, we, we had talked somewhat about this and there is space for just members of the community to be involved. So if if you do fall outside of that street, you can still apply as a member of the community. Um, and and for that reason, I felt like it was, you know, once you start kind of messing with the streets, it could just go on and on and on. So I think that that kind of covers everything.
We do have a lot of little streets in this town, so.
We do.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much for that comment. All right. Moving on to item 15.2, schedule a date for interviews for planning commission, confirm the appointments to the major HL committee and direct staff to reopen. The recruitment for the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee, Peak and the Recreation and Parks Commission. Mr. Morris.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll try to cover this one.
Thank you.
Um, so, right, um, as you can see in your staff report, um, so we have the, um, the application period open until February 12th. Um, and it closed. We received four, um, applications for the planning commission. Um, and, uh, we only had two seats open, so we could essentially, um, start interview, the interview process for those four applicants and. Um, so I would, um, suggest, um, coming up with a, a, a meeting date tonight that you can all agree on. Um, I just want to mention that the planning commission, uh, meeting is canceled next week, so that might be a good opportunity to, um. I mean, I know it's, it's kind of soon, but, you know, that's an opportunity that we could, um, have that open meeting for those interviews. Um, and then Recreation and Parks Commission, there were three open positions, but we only received two applications, so. Um, we could reopen that. We could reopen that application, um. Uh, period again, or we could, um. We could, um, interview, or I'm sorry, um. Appoint those two and then reopen the application period for that one, um, remaining vacant seat. So, um. Measures H and L Committee, uh, there were two open positions and two incumbents, um, applied. So you could essentially just reappoint those two if you wanted to and close Measures H and L. Um, and then there's the Economic Advisory Commission, where there are four open positions, but we only received three, um, applications, so. Um, there's a few options, um, but staff's recommendation is to schedule an interview for the planning commission. Um, for those four applicants and get those two seats filled and then reopen, um, the application period for the Recreation and Parks Commission as well as Peak. Um, and then just reappoint those two incumbents for Measures H and L Committee. Um, so, uh, that's kind of it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I can try to answer for you. That's for you.
Just, uh, you know, just for clarification, so the people that have already applied for Rexon Park and for Peak, they would just roll over, you know, their, their, uh, uh, applications, just so. In case we get, I can anticipate that question.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, they'd still be valid.
And I believe there, I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, but. In the event that, uh, we, we go beyond the March 31st date, that we would, that the, um, that the current members of those. Boards or commissions would retain their seats until we had them filled if we're going to extend these, these. These interview or these application deadlines. Did I say that correctly?
I'll, I'll let city attorney answer that, but that's, that's my understanding also.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. We've had this situation occur once before, and that was a procedure that we followed at that time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, go, go right ahead.
Just, just one quick comment. I got a text message from Brian Chase. Thinking that the statement was made that all three business associations were defunct, asking that we correct that. We were only referring to the two. Um, so I will make that statement, so.
I, I was just thinking about that and was like, oh, I, I didn't mean to word it that way sometimes.
Thank you. Just wanted to make that correct.
Two defunct and one changed. All right. Moving on to, um, Jackie.
Yeah. Um, this is what we've done in the past when we haven't had enough applicants as we reopen this, so I think we should be consistent in what we've done in the past and. So just hold the applications that we have, open it for further applications and then do one interview process.
I agree.
All right. So let's, uh, before we go. Getting too far into this, let's open up the public comment. Did you want to make another, did you have a question for staff, Michael?
No, I'm just going to say, I mean, statute, unless it's stated in statute generally on, on all appointments, unless it's. Speced, specified that you fall off the committee on dates certain, uh, you automatically stay on until replaced.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Cal, you want to go ahead and open up for a public comment?
Sure, a public comment is open for item 12.5. These are the committees, city committees and commissions. Recruitment. Um, we will start with Sue Rodman. Go ahead.
Good evening, Sue.
Good evening. I'm very happy to stay on the Major H and Major L Committee and I consider it to be. A, uh, great thing for you to go ahead and reappoint me to remain. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate your work there.
Ruth Michelson, go ahead.
Thank you. Um. It's getting late, so I'm, I'm not being quite as well, but. Um. I asked if there would be clarification on some of these committees about, because I, I've read your. Your manual and I've looked at your application. I've tried to cross-reference things and. There's a lack of clarity on these commissions about, well, the clearest, what I should say is Planning Commission. That one is written up very, very well and very, very clearly. Um, the manual I'm referring to, City of Placerville. Committee, Commission and Board Policy Manual, Revised 3.3 of 2017. I found that on your website. Planning Commission is very, very clear. That you can either be a resident or. You can be an owner of a business or a building downtown and live in the community. And I assume community means, I guess, county or West Slope or something. But, um. The others are less clear. And so when, uh, city council member, um. Kara Taylor. Said this would make no difference. It might make a difference. Uh, with the changes that you make in, in the last resolution. So I would like clarification at some point about the qualifications. And as I said in my letter, some of these are, in your policy manual, are totally silent on the issue. Uh, city residents, building owner, business owner. There's nothing. So what do we assume when there's, uh. Lack of definition.
Ruth, Ruth, can I ask you to, to clarify, which commission or committee are you referring to when you're asking that question?
Um, really, all of them besides Planning Commission are. Unclear, I think. You know, again, it's kind of getting late and I. I think that, um. Peak says that. If you. Peak says, well, they say that, uh, obviously the members at large. The members at large are, um. Residents. That's, there's no question about that. But, and so then I'm assuming that the others would be, you have a business or a building in those areas. Of Placerville Drive, Broadway, Downtown.
Okay.
If a business or a building. That's what I, I'd like some clarification on. And, um. And then I think parks, Recreation of Parks, and I think Measure H and L are silent on the requirements. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
I think the city should consider that, um. All committee appointments live in the city of Placerville. I think you can find business owners that live in the city. I think all of the committee and commission members, I think it's something you should look into possibly changing. Because I think all the committee and commission members need to have a perspective of living in the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Call our 857. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So written into city code is that the Placerville Planning Commission terms expire. On March 1st. So you have about four or five days to seat two new members. Um. The idea that you can just extend their term. It's not part of the code. It's written in the city code. Their terms expire on March 1st. It is your job to interview and appoint somebody before March 1st. And this is happening at an alarming rate where you are not. Getting the job done in time. So I don't have the city code section to. Refer you to, but it's there. Those city planning commissioners' terms expire March 1st, and there's two of them this time. You will still have a quorum. But you need to, tonight. Set a interview period within the next four something days. And appoint two more planning commissioners. That's all. Thanks.
All right.
No further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Cal. And bring it back to the council for. Any further discussion or a motion?
So I think we should take these one by one. Um, we haven't. Put together a date, so maybe we could collaborate and come up with a scheduling date for the planning commission so we can make a motion on that.
Well, that sounds like a smart approach, actually. Let's do that. Oh dear. Um. I was thinking, I was, that's kind of awkward trying to go through our calendars on a meeting like this and figure out a date, but here we are, so let's do it.
Regina had thrown out next Tuesday since the planning commission is not meeting. Um, I'm available.
Second of March.
That works for.
Yep.
I could do that day.
I can do that day. Is that, is that, are we talking about a 6 o'clock?
Whatever.
Start time? Or do we, normally we do it more in the afternoon.
I think we've done five. Yeah, I want to say we've done, we've even done earlier, I think.
We've been doing it in the afternoon.
Yeah.
What works for everybody.
It carries five.
An issue.
I can do five on Tuesday. I'm also, Monday's great for me. I don't know. I can use a little one day.
Monday, Monday afternoon works for me, too.
Normally Monday's good for me, but this coming Monday is not. Sorry.
Back to Tuesday.
I can do five on Tuesday.
Tuesday at 5:00, okay. Going once. Patty?
I think so. I, I haven't got my calendar with me, but I think it's fine.
All right. We got her going twice. Done. Okay, so we're looking at, uh. Count, um. Planning Commission meeting, not meeting, but interviews, uh, beginning in, can we get everything ready to go by that time, Cleve? Are we good to go? I guess Regina said so, so we must be good to go, huh?
Yeah, the, I, I, I think we can do that. The only conflict would be perhaps if one of the applicants has a conflict, but we can. We can check with them first thing tomorrow and and see what we can find out, right, Regina? Does that work?
Yeah.
Well, it is a planning commission style meeting night, so yeah, I think that.
It's their first test, right?
Yeah. Okay, great. So, so do we need to bring it back to council if we're going to reset a new meeting date? Or we're just doing it here because we're all here?
What do you mean?
So, so there was some, there was, it was, it was stated that we need to set a, a date. It seemed like it was by. Design that it has to be done at a council meeting to set this date. Is that true or is that just my imagination?
Well, you, you have on your agenda our recommendations that you select a date to interview, I believe, so.
It's not a requirement. So what I'm asking is, does it need to be a public process setting that date?
No.
No, okay, good. That's all I was asking, because if it didn't work, I didn't want to have to circle back around here.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. So that, so we're set for this, so that would be part of our motion is, uh. Or we can just set it, actually. It doesn't need to be a council motion, but for, um. March 2nd, at 5:00 PM. Did you check, Patty?
I'm, I'm checking.
Okay. All right. Then what's next for your request here, Mr. Cal?
Um, to reopen the application period for the Recreation and Parks Commission as well as Peak to receive some extra additional applications to fill those seats.
Do you have a recommendation of how long through the end of March or?
Um, uh.
Cleve, were we looking at possibly reopening it as soon as possible until March ninth?
I think that March ninth is your next meeting, so the soonest we would be able to bring it back to you would be, well, normally what happens with those two commissions is it's not the full council, but a committee of the council. I believe we've said Mayor and Vice Mayor would interview those. If I'm wrong, let me know, but I think that's what we did.
Park and Rec, we've always had a full council for interviews.
Was it full council for Rec and Park? Okay.
Yeah.
Online, and it was.
Okay.
For the commissions, yes.
Okay, so it's only the committees that are that way. I apologize. So we could bring it back. If you closed it before March ninth, we could bring it back on March ninth for you to set a date for Recreation and Parks for that, for those interviews. And then to, for the interviews for the, for Peak, it's just a matter of the Mayor and Vice Mayor getting together and and determining when they want to do those. So, and then, but then we do have to bring that back to council. So that couldn't come back until the twenty third, which would be probably the date that the other one would be ready to come back anyway, so.
So we're looking at two weeks basically for until the next, well, do we want to have the closed date? We don't want to have the closed date on the ninth, because that's a council meeting. So what date do we want to have it closed on?
I think we can go right up to that. I'd like to give as much time as we can. I would recommend we go at least to the eighth and then we can we can update the council at the meeting what we've received as of that date.
Well, we could do the ninth at five and that's probably just the two weeks from now. Does that work with you, Regina? Okay, great.
That'll work.
Okay. So we got Rec, Park, Recreation and Parks Commission and Peak reopen until the five o'clock on the ninth of March. And then we're going to, if anybody, if nobody objects with part of the resolution, I mean, the motion would be to reappoint the two Major H and L members.
I have a question. For, for the interviews of the Park Commission and Peak, if we are having the whole council together to interview the Parks Commission, should we not just interview the Peak applicants at the same time instead of then splitting off and having a separate interview process and then having to bring it back to council?
Peak is two people, and so is Major H and L, but.
That's the way we've done it in the past, so.
Yeah, historically, it's, it's, it's the Mayor Vice Mayor that's doing the Peak.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no reason you couldn't do it the same day, like, right as soon as we're done with Park and Rec if you're trying to consolidate time.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, Planning Commission, do we need to set a date for Planning Commission and Peak as well? No, not at this time. We'll do that on the ninth. Okay. Motion, or do you want me to do it?
I'll make a motion to set the ninth for the, yeah, the new, for applicants for Rexon Park and Peak and accept the reappointments to Measure H and L.
And then March second for our interview.
In March second for, five o'clock, March second for our P C interviews.
Second.
All right, thank you, Patty. Can I get a roll call motion, please, Ms. Collins?
Councilmember Borelli?
Hi.
Councilmember No?
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Hi.
Mayor Thomas?
Hi.
All right, thank you very much. We got through that. And then moving on to item number thirteen, council reports from other agencies. Eldorado Transit.
Meeting next week, same with Eldorado Transportation Commission.
Right. LAFCO, Jackie.
We're meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
We did have a meeting back in January twenty seventh, and the only action item we had was affirming the Tahoe Resource Conservation District's sphere of influence.
All right. And you also went through some grueling orientation with LAFCO, huh?
Yeah, no, it's just a lot of information. It's great. I'm enjoying it.
I don't think, I don't, very few people will fully recognize the extent and the breadth of what LAFCO does in a community like this. It's, it's.
Absolutely, because mostly the council reports are, well, not much happened. And then you sit down and you understand how intricate it really is. And yeah, like you said, I found it very interesting.
Which is also probably why not much happens. Secod, Michael.
No, I mean, it was interesting. We actually had a long presentation on the item that Pierre presented to us last, our last council meeting, which was on that whole redlining new. We had hired a consultant to deal with the new housing element, and so there was a long presentation just to all of them. So we're well, so from my perspective, we were well ahead of the curve there already from our city. I know, I think Pierre had been working with Secod already a little bit on this as well, but that was sort of it. We'll have another meeting on the eighth, I believe, is our next policy committee meeting.
All right, thank you, Michael. Patty, Fire Safe?
No, we, we had our meeting and really, I'll tell you, the biggest discussion is that everybody seems really concerned about is the evacuation plan. And I was told, and I was in touch with Woody at Transportation, and he told me that they had submitted an application for a grant to help them form a study, and he also said that if they get it and that he will be in touch with a lot of different agencies, the Fire Safe Council being one for, you know, to have their input.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Patty. I do know that there is a lot of movement and people working. I think funding and timing is always an issue with developing these plans and bringing the people together and and I, but I do know that I've heard from a variety of agencies over the last couple of weeks of people of movement. I can't say anything that is getting, that is being done for certain, but I do know that it is top of mind on quite a few people. From fire to police and even Transportation Commission, which, and so, yes, and I know the city, I know Rebecca and her and I have had conversations with this as well. So it's, it's definitely, it's not, it's not a task that's taken lightly, but it's also a task that requires a lot of a lot of effort on all sorts of agencies, parts and coordinations. We are, we are moving on that. And item number four, did I miss anything there? No, I didn't. Item number fourteen, future agenda items. Anybody have any requests for future agenda items? Yes.
Um.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
There were some good suggestions about the qualifications of these committee members and commission members. Should we look at the manual that defines what the qualifications are for these applicants? Not for this round, but going forward in terms of, you know, like residency and things like that? And what would be the document that we would need to look at to do that?
We can, we can look at the manual definitely, and staff can provide some recommendations and then bring it back to you for your review. Some of those membership items may be contained, however, either by ordinance and city code or, like tonight, through the resolution. So if there's further clarification that is needed, we can look at that and bring that back for you, so.
I do remember a lot of the discussion, like Peak, I don't want to get too deep into it, but there was, there was a lot of discussion on how that membership was made up and where people came from. And it was a thoughtful process. Is that something we really want to, should we individually look into this first and have them provide us the information? And then decide whether we want to come back or not with that?
I'm fine with that.
Because I don't, I don't, I'm thinking about, you know, the staff time to, to go through the process of creating a, you know, staff report and that when, when I think we should look at it ourselves, and if they could just provide us with some, some information, we could look at it individually and connect back with Cleve and maybe next meeting can have a thought of where we want to go with that.
I'm fine with that.
All right, thank you. City manager and staff reports.
Dennis?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted, I got an email from a fellow and I was thinking that maybe there might be some folks out there who are interested in, it's from Alan, gosh, I don't know his last name, but anyway, he has a, it's kind of like, it's called Neighborhood Radio Watch Program.
Yes.
And it's kind of like, you know, the, and anyway, they're having a meeting tomorrow night. And I was thinking there might be some residents that are interested, you know, in joining or hearing about it. If they want to get in touch with them, it, like I say, it's called Eldorado, Eldorado County's, it's called Non-Ham. And it's the Neighborhood Radio Watch Program, so I think they can pull it up online if they're interested. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Patty. Yeah, I got that email as well. I'm glad you mentioned that. Back to city manager and staff reports.
We don't have anything tonight, other than I just want to mention, the council's aware of this, but for the public also, that we have set the date for our governance workshop for March nineteenth, that's a Friday. It will take place from nine in the morning until two in the afternoon with a short thirty minute break for lunch. So we will get that scheduled and that information out, but that will be a public meeting. It will be done by Zoom, similar to what these meetings are. However, I just want to get that information out, so the public is welcome to listen in on that, that meeting, so.
And I believe there will be time at the very end of the meeting to have public comment, is that correct?
Probably. We haven't set that exact agenda yet. I'm still working with our consultant on that, but we will put that together and make that determination, so.
I think the county did something like that when they went through theirs.
Yeah.
So, okay, all right, upcoming agenda, upcoming items that could be on our next agenda. I'm gonna read through some of them. Traffic speed on Broadway ordinance. Completion of mosquito substation phase, oh, mosquito stabilization phase one. I don't want to give Rebecca any more projects than she has already. And Broadway Sidewalk Maintenance Project. Several things, ten, annual ten fee update, mid-year budget, police drone, potentially, again, formula, business ordinance discussion and retail tobacco ordinance. And at this time at nine forty-one, I I would like to adjourn this meeting and look forward to seeing everybody back here in two weeks. John, are you on for, okay, no, just to wave goodbye. Okay, good. All right, everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
See ya.
Night, everyone.
Good night.